Call the meeting into order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the August 19th Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. With the exception of Mr. Ziegler, who is trying to attend via Teams or Zoom or whatever we use these days. I announce up front, we do have four public hearings tonight. If anyone does wish to speak during those public hearings, there's forms on the back, in the back there, please fill it out and turn it into our clerk.
Sorry.
No worries. I can hear you here. Do you want me to just leave it on speaker for you? Well, I can hardly hear you though. But I'll leave it on speaker and hopefully we'll see what happens, alright? So Mr. Ziegler is communicating via phone, but I could not hear him well. Hopefully he can hear us. And Nathan, if you can't, if we can't hear you and you have something to say, you want to text me, just let me know, but I'll watch my phone for you. Again, we do have four public hearings, so if you do wish to speak, please fill out the form. We do have a few announcements tonight. The city of Post Falls will be holding a public open house on the transportation master plan in the City Hall Rotunda on Thursday, August 28th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This open house is to collect public comments on proposed projects needed to address the impacts from growth and setting priorities for the projects needed to provide a safe and efficient transportation system for the next 20 years. Visit the transportation master plan link on the city's website for additional information, and that website is postfalls.gov. City Hall and city business offices will be closed Monday, September 1st in observance of Labor Day. Police, fire, and rescue services for emergencies may be reached by calling 911. The police department will remain open for walk-in emergencies. For water-related emergencies, please call 208-773-3517. And not on the list, but I'd usually make this under mayor comments, but a school is about to open. Please understand, remember, there's going to be many children in the streets, trying to cross streets, being dropped off at schools, et cetera. I ask that everybody please be cognizant of that, drive safely, protect the kids. I have talked with Captain Brannell, I've had two folks over in the Montrose area that have talked to me about what they feel is excessive speed, went both around the school over there. So our police department will be looking at possibly, hopefully getting a speed machine, whenever you call them out there to track that. So again, please be careful with kids going back to school. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No official amendment, but we are canceling the executive session for the.
Anybody object?
Second.
Any declarations of conflict? Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes for the August 5th, 25, city council meeting. Item B is payables, August 6th through August 20th, 2025. And item C is June caisson investments. Item D is apartment 26 final plat application. And item E is Tetter Business Condominium 2 final plat application.
Questions on the consent?
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Blue.
Aye.
Ziegler. Heard him.
Got you.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sick leader?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Now we're into public hearings. The first public hearing. Before we start, what I'm gonna, come on up, John, but what I'm gonna say is, as we go through these public hearings, you may agree or disagree, that's fine. We're gonna listen to anybody that wants to speak, we're gonna ask that everybody treat everybody else with respect, despite whether or not you agree with them. No comments, please, from the audience. If you're gonna speak, come on up to the, sign up, come up to the microphone so we can get you on record. And we'll listen to you and ask that you listen to everybody else. First public hearing is a painted rock annexation. Open the public hearing.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Malloy, and members of city council, John Manley, planning manager, introducing the painted rock annexation file number ANNX 253. So the owner of this is Rhino Land LLC, the applicant is Ray Kimball with Whipple Consulting Engineers. They are asking city council to approve the annexation request of approximately 4.67 acres and assign the medium-density R2 zoning district to that. This application was forwarded by the Planning and Zoning Commission with that R2 zone. The location of this is as you see here in the hatched box, it's on the northwest corner of West Midway and Maguire Road. Would like to note at this time, because of this imagery, that to the east, you do see that there's a church to the east. That's an LDS church, then you have some multifamily to the southeast, you do have some mixed medium-density that's being developed in the city and off to the west, some of these surrounding uses in the county are those large lot county lots in the county. Then looking at the surrounding zoning, you see off to the east, the yellow, that would be in the Montrose PUD area. Those are single-family homes outside of that church that I mentioned in the Montrose PUD. You also see the industrial zone off to the east, going towards the south, the southeast. That there, the way our PUD used to be allowed is you could get non-permitted uses, or typically not permitted uses in that. That's why you see that multifamily in the industrial zone and the, oh, sorry, and the like church there in the, in the R1. So now currently, if you were to get a PUD, you have to get the underlying zone to match the use, we changed that quite a while ago. I already mentioned, oh, actually I didn't, but yeah, looking at the current site, there is currently a large lot, single-family use on this. I do have attached this PowerPoint, they do have a proposed subdivision, they are gonna deal with that, that existing house. It's kind of mentioned here in wastewater, that any existing septic systems, upon development, they would be required to abandon that and connect that house to sanitary sewer. It's also to note, it's over the Rathfield Prirographer, and there are wastewater facilities to facilitate the proposed annexation and subdivision. Water would be provided by East Green Irrigation District, nearby roads, the Midway Avenue, that's a classified minor collector, and Maguire being a minor arterial. As we typically note, that with annexations, we do get right-of-way and easements with annexations, and you get improvements on those at the time of development. So now we're working our way into the zoning change, zoning review criteria, there's three of them. This is, we're starting to delve into the future land use designation and goals and policies. So here you see this proposed site here in the hatched, the lighter orange, that's a quadrant of the medium-density designation in our current comprehensive plan, and then it goes to the higher-density multifamily out there in the orange, and it transitions to that business commercial on Southeast Way. The blue, which is surrounding to the west, that was designated as transitional to give you as the decision-makers to look at the surrounding uses, because depending on what happened at what given time, that might change the direction of what may be perceived as being acceptable. To the east of Maguire Road, you see that lower-density residential district being assigned, and then transitions to that business commercial. And this is all in that West Prairie Focus area, and shows the project site being right there on the eastern limits there, about that location. I did want to kind of explain kind of why the current comprehensive plan got its designation, as we did have workshops specifically on this. Is it was looked at this corridor along Southeast Way and looked at how do you transition from this current environment that's along Southeast Way to the future? And so the current comp plan did look at mitigating the potential, I'll go back to this, you know, like the light and noise effect of that transportation corridor, and as it illuminates northward from that, and as the traffic increases, how does that get mitigated? So within this, in the current comp plan, that's how it was done, is through the perception or the conception of doing more of a future land use designation and ultimately letting that built environment kind of mitigate that impact. That way, as you get lower density farther to the north, would help reduce that impact. There you kind of see that the surrounding environment surrounding this, this pocket, I kind of explained that here, a little bit in this bubble. There's this little pocket here, it's just kind of like this awkward area for planning in a hole, because you're kind of going from this commercial industrial corridor to a railroad corridor, and it's bound by Corbin Road and Maguire Road. And some of the uses that surround it, you see here off to the west, you've got that medium-density trailer park, you've got various commercial industrial, and then I already mentioned the industrial on Maguire, transitioning from other industrial multifamily and then that LDS church. And so then how does, the question is, and we're gonna be looking at this on our current comp plan update, what is the best way for this, from a land use perspective and a designation perspective, transition from here towards the railroad? Here is the road classification, here's where you see the arterial of Maguire Road and the minor collector of Midway. Now how Midway actually terminates ultimately to Corbin and how that goes, we've discussed internally, there's, as it annexes to Westerly, we may look at that as being maybe a more efficient path, getting that maybe further away from that rail corridor. But until we get those annexation applications and until we get going westward, we don't really know how that may exactly migrate, but that's the intent. Looking at some of these goals and policies now, we're in that West Prairie, looks at focusing on our broad types of housing types, greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness, and connecting neighborhoods and community trails to amenities. A goal that could potentially work towards that would be goal six, and that's looking at improving the Post Falls transportation network on pace and in concert with this plans, needs, and objectives. There's three policies that I highlight here on this that may be applicable, there may be others, and I cite some more in the staff report. The one is getting the rights away, you know, and the adequate utility corridors for facilitating development. And the other one, you're getting the connectivity for the sidewalks, bike paths, and trails, which this being, I'll go back a few slides here. I think the best one was actually, sorry, I gotta go back so far, was this one, where you have improvements on the east side, the southeast corner, and then the south, that upon development at some time, the area, this Maguire Road corridor would benefit, because now you have full road improvements on both the west side of Maguire and the east side. So both pedestrians and vehicles get the appropriate distance from themselves for a safe intersection. Now looking on goal seven, it's looking for plan for and establish different types of the community needs for long-term sustainability. One way to do this is providing a mixed housing to deal with the different needs of different industrial, commercial, employment, services, and dealing with different age needs and income needs. I also highlight here, the housing needs report has a homeownership strategy, and I highlight number two, diverse housing types to meet the needs. And here's where I bring forward that proposed subdivision, they do plan on here, these are, this is the, basically, it's kind of like an R1 subdivision, PUD, these are 50-foot wide lots, very similar to what you see over in Montrose. So they're very similar in width and in square footage, and they're just on the, the west side. So here is the three review criteria I mentioned, I went through the criteria one and two. The third one deals with noticing other agencies and looking for any sort of impacts that may have on other agencies. And this is who we noticed, this is the comments received, they're all really neutral, no impact, no concerns. And then the county fire and rescue, they, they review at the time of development. So prior to construction improvement agreement, they review that and make sure that their safety needs for access are met. There's the criteria again, do you have any questions for me with the staff report of this?
Questions to John.
Did you say the East Green Acres said that they have the ability to service?
Yeah, they're in the, yep. Nothing?
Well, we'll get you back up if we need to. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Rob's not here, so be careful with the transportation question.
Applicant? Name for the record, please.
Sorry, I'm bringing this up. There you go.
Evening, Mayor Council, Ray Kimball for the record, I'm here on behalf of Rhino Land Company. So I'm not gonna really delve into too much of the YR2. I think the staff report or application and our presentation in front of planning commission really well established that. And at the record, it's pretty clear that an R2 zone with a single-family restriction on it and the subdivision that we are proposed, that we are proposing that was approved at planning commission, I believe two weeks ago, really shows what our intent is for a single-family subdivision. It's for as entry level as you can get at this point in time in our, in our community. But I do want to speak a little bit to why this annexation is appropriate at this point in time. So this is the subdivision. This is, as John mentioned, something very similar to the product line that's right across the street in, in Montrose. So it's pretty much a 50-foot wide subdivision, typical starter homes that you see in city of Post Falls. But when it comes to promoting, or why do, why do we want to annex into the city Post Falls, why is this the right time? Promoting infill development, now, that's, that's kind of a, hmm, alright, is it really infill, is it not, I don't know, there's, there's, I would say yes. There's city of the west, city of the east, city to the north, it's kind of a large peninsula, almost island. But prioritizing annexation opportunities and supporting development patterns that interconnect streets and provide connectivity, especially pedestrian connectivity is important. But as a city, you know, so as a community in a whole, you know, Cootney County is, prices, home prices are high, we all know that. And, and as a city, we have very limited levers we can pull to affect those kinds of things. And it's, we can't really change the demand, right, so that's both internal and external. But we can change the supply side of that curve. And the real estate market is one of those things that is incredibly, it works really well with, with economic models when it comes to just supply-demand curves. And so part of this presentation is talking about what, where we are. And how do we, how do we help housing happen? Not, and not at the same time, provide upward pressure on prices. So I don't think anyone who just bought a house two years ago wants their house price to fall, property value to fall. But this massive increase year after year in housing costs, it really affects our community. So when it comes to some of the goals, we want to encourage annexation of county islands. And we want to make sure that there's adequate land available for future housing needs, so that hits two of those things. So this is, I'm gonna talk a little bit about infill development. So right in here, this is the city of Post Falls, and this little square right there, little rectangle is what we're talking about. So we have over here on the right, this is what we call the central island, and that's an area of infill priority. We have this area right here, which is a half-section that 15 years ago was, was all five and 10-acre tracks, and it has now turned into very, very nice neighborhoods. It was five and 10 acres at a time, just kind of dominoes falling down as water and sewer and development has progressed through there. And we see here that this open area here is also five and 10-acre tracks, and it is surrounded almost completely by city. There's about a, there's two properties, two or three properties right here, that if they were to annex, they would connect and make an entire island out of it. But what really happens, I'll try to be a little bit faster here, so this is that central island I was just talking about. So those red properties there, those of the 200 properties in this photo that are in the county, only 19 are of a size that are easily developable, and three of those are either churches or mobile home parks. So that kind of gives you the, then an idea of the availability of developable property within that central island. And, and I know some of those properties are already in the process of being developed. But it takes a certain size, and not only does it take size, but it takes, someone has to want to sell their property, have to put it on the market, and then it's gotta be at a price where it can be developed. So this right here is the area that we're looking at. So in the same vicinity, smaller area, there are 55 properties, and only five of those properties are not easily developable. So that tells you where really the demand for growth and the availability of property, other than essentially large lots, or not large lots, large land areas, so large acreage owners, Schneid Millers, the Jacklins, et cetera. So this is where a lot of the five and 10-acre subdivisions are probably gonna end up happening. So I'll talk about, a little bit more about the fiscal reason as to why this makes sense, and why do we develop? And why do we, why do we annex properties, you know, 15 years ago as a, 20 years ago, alright, I was like, oh, 20. As a naive young engineer, I asked Bill Melvin once, why don't you guys just annex the entire island of county? Like, why don't you just do it? And he looked at me like I was a dummy, and he said, because we have to buy the right-of-way. And I went, oh, okay, I didn't know that. So what happens is, is that when we annex, and so when a property annexes into the city, as you all well know, the right-of-way based on the transportation master plan comes with it, comes to the city for free. And when it develops, the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the road widening, the curb, gutter, sidewalk, pathways, all of that stuff gets built at no cost to the city. So we have a transportation master plan that speaks to what our needs are going to be moving forward. We adjust it every five or so years, but it basically follows the grid network that was established over 100 years ago. And right now, we've got Maguire Road as an arterial, we have Midway as a collector, those are expensive streets to build. And you can ask Post Falls Highway District, when the right-of-way isn't available, and the road doesn't get built by a developer in front of it, on Prairie Avenue in particular, that's an incredibly large bill to, that the taxpayer gets to, to, to pay. Instead, when we develop, or when we annex into the city, the city gets the infrastructure for free, gets a right-of-way for free. And even though it happens earlier than the city might need it, the cost of maintenance between the time it actually gets built and the time the city needs it is a fraction of the cost that it would take for the city to actually have to go build it, buy the right-of-way, build the infrastructure when they actually need it. At that point in time, that's when every one of you, or the future yous, I would say, would be getting phone calls, angry phone calls from the constituents, because the traffic sucks, that's horrible, and we need a wider road. So, and in dollars, what does that really mean? So these right here are, this is a, it's a cost estimate, so this is based on bid prices from this year. This is for private work, so private development work, public works is 20% to 25% higher. But just the cost of infrastructure, including the right-of-way acquisition, widening of, of Midway and the widening of Maguire, adds up to $292,000 in today's dollars, 10 years from now, at a 2% inflation rate, that is $350,000 and change. It's a significant amount of money that the city saves in the future by annexing and allowing development. And so that is why we think that this is the right time, because I guess if you ask yourself, what happens when properties like these go up for sale, they don't annex into the city? They don't, a 950 or million, 950,000 or million-dollar property doesn't get bought by the guy down the road, gets purchased from someone from out of town, and they end up tearing down the old house, and they build a McMansion with a 30,000 or 40,000 square foot shop, and in 20 years, it's still there, and they're never gonna annex, because they got their, their in-town farm. And, and so having this opportunity now makes a lot of sense, and that's why we're here. That's why we encourage you to say yes to annexing this property and zoning it R2, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kimball?
Can you speak more to the single-family restriction?
Yeah, so we have no problem with a single-family detached land use restriction, that's what we intend to build.
Okay, so we could do that in a development agreement, or should we talk about that at the zoning part?
I, I don't think, we have no objection to something like that, and we'll leave that to your legal counsel to figure out the ramifications of all of those things, but I thought, we don't have any problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Kimball? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to testify? Thank you. Wishing to speak in favor, Josh Server? Did I pronounce the name right?
Yeah. Thank you.
And then, if you will, just please give me your name for the record.
Yes, sir, Josh Sir, 2483 West Moselle Drive. I am fifth generation North Idaho, and we are the applicants for the following project. So we're here to show our support for this and kind of explain that we've, we've been in touch with the engineering, we're using the same engineering firm that the painted rock applicant is, and trying to make this a cohesive project that is something that's going to work well for the city. This, these starter home R2 neighborhoods do not sell a lot of t-shirts, but in my opinion, they're very needed. This is, I've got some, some data I'll share with you if I could, but it's, it's intel that you already know that the median household income in Cootney County is competing for about 3% of the housing stock. So a project like this, in my opinion, really works, and it's really, I think, Ray did a great job. John did a great job of showing how it fits within the comp plan, and I think it's a good project, and I would, I would urge you to annex it. Can I pass these out?
Yeah, I think we can, can we warn, or field, I'm sorry, you want the clerk?
Yeah, you can hand it to the clerk.
Oh, okay. Alright, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, Debbie Vaca-Voken? Of this one? Okay.
Hi, I'm Debbie Vaca.
I'm sorry, mispronounced your name.
That's okay. I live on, do I have to give my address?
No.
Okay, I live on the street that's to the south of this one, and I don't really like the development happening around me. I wish I could just stay rural. This area is unique, and it really fits for what I do, which is have animals and grow grapes. I feel that we should keep some of the land for opportunities for people that have desire to do 4H and garden and things like that. The streets are pretty narrow in this area, and with all the traffic coming out of the development on the east side, you're gonna have more coming out onto Maguire, probably should be a light there or something. Say, I just wanted to mention the lights, there is no lights on these streets. They're pretty dark, so I'm sure the area that they develop will have lights, but then the rest of it's gonna be dark, which, yeah, anyway, so. I am just not in the art, into the R2 zoning, because I feel like it will affect my property value. These homes are just gonna be. These homes are just going to be rentals mostly usually, starter homes, people don't stay very long. And I did want to mention that that land use map that everybody talks about, it hasn't been updated in a while. There's been a lot of growth here. And there's really not the need that everybody thinks, you know, like there's a lot of opportunities for people to get into homes and stuff. And I just, yeah, I wanted to encourage R1, if it is going to get annexed and then developed, I think it's just a better fit for this area. It'll limit the crowding and all the traffic issues. And I just don't think developers should be able to come in and dictate the changes in this town. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Also wishing to speak in opposition, Justin Stukey?
My name is Justin Stukey. I also live in that immediately surrounding area. Specifically the R1 area surrounding the church that was shown on the photos. And my comments are fairly similar to the previous testimony, specifically I, I'm coming to date unofficially represent the church that's there. It's the church that I attend regularly. And as part of that, we have youth generally from about 10 years old up to 17 that are regularly frequently, frequenting that building. And it does concern me some to have that annexed as an R2 for similar reasons as the previous testimony in that with higher turnover and those, those houses changing hands more frequently, it's much more difficult for parents and homeowners like me to get to know these people personally and thus help to ensure that, that the kids that are coming and going from that church have a very, very safe area to grow and, and, and spend their time. We often will have activities and things in those parking lots and, and with kids coming and going, I'm, I'm very, very conscious of, of the developments surrounding this and I don't particularly love the R2 that's kitty cornered to the church, but I understand that developments like these need to happen somewhere. This one in particular, being directly across the church, gives me a little bit more pause. And similarly, I would prefer that that be annexed as R1 zone with the R2 maybe happening a little bit further back. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Applicant wish to rebut?
Evening, counsel. Ray Kimble for the record. Our comprehensive plan speaks. Well, let's go back. We have an area of city impact, which is essentially by definition, an area that where we at some point in time envision the city is going to be going. And this area is clearly within the area of city impact. I guess it's just a question of when, right? With regards to R1 versus R2, these lots are almost exactly what is being proposed, or what is, exists in Montrose right across the street. Product line is the exact same. They are single family homes and a, and we call it a starter home. I've lived in my starter home for 24 years. Turnover happens as families grow, but that doesn't mean that, you know, that doesn't mean that they're bad neighborhoods. They're fantastic neighborhoods. Montrose is a starter home neighborhood. Many parts of it are. So with regards to the rural area, you know, we are, that property is adjacent to the city. It completes development of that intersection of this property, completes the fourth leg, the fourth corner of that intersection, allowing for safe pedestrian access from all four corners. Allows kids to go back and forth safely with crosswalks and pedestrian facilities. And as I stated before, it's incredibly important that the city, from a, from a fiscal and financial standpoint, look towards the future when it comes to developing or letting development pay for infrastructure that serves the greater community, not just Post Falls, but also for the community, our entire county. Because Maguire is a part of the county's infrastructure. And, and so is Midway. You know, people that live on Midway will be driving east to get to Maguire and they'll get to that intersection and it will have a turn lane. And they'll be upturned left from a turn lane. It'll be a fully developed intersection and it makes a lot of sense. And for that, I would encourage you to annex this as R2. Stand for any further questions you may have.
Additional questions for Mr. Kimble?
I do. So what lot are you referring to in Montrose that it will be the same as, not the single family then?
No, it's, it's, these are the almost exact same size as the Montrose lots, the single, the single family lots in Montrose.
60 feet wide, but these will be 50 feet wide?
The Montrose lots, because Montrose is a PUD, it does not have to have the, meet the 60 foot minimum. So there are, a lot of them are 50 footers. I actually designed one of the phases of Montrose right across the street and most of those are 50 foot lots.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing. So the first question, counsel, you want to entertain the annexation?
So is the annexation of the property in the best in, of the city?
Would you like to start?
I think it is in the best interest of the city. I'm a big fan of preserving county land and I don't like seeing development eating up the prairie in general, and I have said no to a lot of annexations that I felt were pushing out city limits. In this case, I don't believe it is. It's, it's more in the county pocket. And we do need the right of way there because that road does need to expand to handle traffic projections. And what we're looking at here is a decision of, do we annex this and we get the, the right of way? Or do we tax residents more to purchase the right of way because the road is going to need to be expanded either way? And this is, getting it this way is a much more prudent use of city dollars, taxpayer dollars, as long as the development there makes sense. I don't think R1 would be a good fit there because it's half a mile from a commercial quarter that has some maybe lower quality commercial, it's right next to the railroad. And then there's next to existing R2. There's not any R1 homes budding right up against it. And so I, I think this actually does make a lot of sense there. And I love that it's, that it's a plan for a single family starter homes because that's, I think sorely needed in the community. We have people who are trying to start young families and they, you know, stuck renting in an apartment and there's nowhere for them to go. And where do you go to buy a house to start building equity so that you can eventually get the dream house? And, and there's nowhere right now. You can be stuck in an apartment paying $2,000 a month in rent and you're looking at the median home price of $550,000 and you're never going to be able to make that jump. And so you're not going to start a family. You're not going to have the kids that maybe you wanted to have. And having something like this gives young families a way to get into homeownership, which I think is really important. And so I'm, I'm very encouraged by seeing this. I think it lines up well with everything that we need to do. And I think the, the intersection improvements, especially being near a church, are really important for safety as well.
Any else? And we're talking annexation now.
Yeah, I, I would echo most of that. First of all, the, the proposed development, of course, getting ahead of annexation is more to ish. They're willing to accept a single family detached condition, so it makes it very much R1-ish, just with slightly narrow properties. It does complete the street infrastructure. Maguire is getting to be a major road and as the city expands, it's going to be a major north-south. You're going to have, you know, Idaho, Chase, Maguire. That's just the, that's the next one. So I think the, the street infrastructure improvements could be have in there. It's, it's already flowing with what's already developing and, and it's not packing in three-story apartments.
Real quick for anybody else's comments, Nathan has been trying to call back in. He says that he thinks it's futile. So I believe at this point, he's off the meeting. So just, you know. Anybody else? Annexation now.
I mean, I think that the biggest argument for this is just the rights of way and the easement. I don't find that we are short types of land uses at this time in a way that would make this particularly beneficial to the current residents of the city. And I think that that's really the biggest question. I don't like the idea of expanding even this much of the footprint of the city of Post Falls, especially as we come out of a budget hearing where we've talked about our reliance on annexation dollars and our inability to fiscally keep up with the infrastructure that we're currently responsible for. So I think that those are big considerations. If we're talking one lot off of a major minor arterial to get infrastructure, I suppose I could potentially be convinced of that if there is a development agreement to have single family detached houses and we don't find ourselves in a request for a PUD or special use permit, like we have the other ones that we've approved so that then they change the situation after the fact. That, that's really what gives me heartburn about any of these sort of, well, it's R2, but we sort of agree to not exactly do R2, make it more look like R1, then why not just do R1 because we tend to get burned in the back a little bit from those. So I guess if other counsel feels strongly that it is really worth the infrastructure to annex this, I could potentially be convinced of at least that since it's on Maguire.
Any comments? Someone want to float a motion? Oh, we don't need a motion yet. It's just that.
Well, since there's been some questioning, I think we either, if I can hear from a majority of counsel or, or take a vote on it before we move on.
Eric?
Well, I just don't know if it's, I, I actually had a question for the applicant. Is it appropriate to ask that now?
Uh, no, it's closed, right?
The public hearing is closed.
We could reopen, I guess, but.
It's okay. It's not critical. I, I, on the whole, like the, like the idea of this and I think it should go forward.
Mr. Davis? Yeah, I would completely agree. R2, improve why right of way, property off of septic, full road improvement and the idea of single family restriction with the right of way. I like it. So you got the annexation. Going to the zoning?
Works for me. All right, review criteria one, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan?
I would say yes. In terms of embracing the variety of housing types, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about a lot is trying to promote a higher rates of ownership. And everything is gotten so damn expensive that it's really tough to have product out there that people can actually own. So I think developments like this are very sorely needed in this community to give people a chance to own things because what people own, they tend to care about. So that's what I appreciate about this zoning designation.
Comment to that?
I, I think you're right. I agree wholeheartedly. It's called an investment and to say that maybe the timing isn't right or that we don't need this product, I would completely disagree. That I think it is a good fit and the surrounding areas.
Anybody else? Do you have anything else for Field or are we good to move on to the next one?
It would be helpful to have a little bit more about the, what does the future land use map designation give?
The technical description is that R2 is an implementing zone of the medium density classification on the future land use map.
This also does maintain and improve Post Falls transportation network.
Thank you. Right, number two, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
Well, should I copy and paste what I said before because that was more appropriate to this one?
Thank you.
I mean, what we didn't talk about is some of the goals and policies that it puts at risk, which again are those about financial solvency of the city, which is what concerns me.
Anybody else?
I don't see any, any financial downside to the city for doing this. I see financial upside for not having to purchase right of way. But for the, the goals and policies here, we've pointed out things like the pedestrian connectivity, the roadway expansion and the variety of housing types. And those are all goals and policies in the comprehensive plan.
And finally, does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the city?
None of them raised any objection.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, how do we want to add in the development agreement?
I got you covered.
With the crosswalks that they said they're going to build as well? Because those don't come standard.
So the, the public hearing does encompass the annexation and development agreement. So if there were proposed amendments to that, that is included in your packet, we could float that in a motion and bring that development agreement back for final approval.
Okay.
Okay.
So I would move to approve, I got a, what's this called?
Painted rock annexation ANX 25-3.
Painted rock annexation ANX 23.
25.
25. I go back to the top. Thank you. ANX 25-3. And that it be assigned to the zoning designation of R2 with approval pending development agreement, limiting development to single family detached homes only and assuring that there is a crosswalk and the road is stated.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Do we have Nathan?
No, Nathan's off.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stick leader?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Wish passes. Thank you. Next item up tonight is the Lingar annexation ANX 24-11. With that, I'll open the public hearing. I don't think I mentioned previously, but if anybody's testifying tonight, there is a timer and Field, again, is that on the podium?
That one works. The TV turns off.
Okay, so if you pay attention to the timer in front of you and if we start getting close, I'll let you know.
So yes, the Lingar annexation, file number ANX 24-11. The owner is Mickey Lingar. The applicant is Joe Turner. That being said, Jeremy Tezuli is representing the applicant tonight, I mean, representing the owner tonight and we will be presenting. So they're asking for approximately 4.5 acres of an annexation into the city of Post Falls with the medium density R2 zoning. This was forwarded also by the PNZ with that zoning. The, just a little bit of backstory, the reason why the numbers are a little bit different. The, this annexation came in a while ago, a little bit before the other one. The, this owner got the notice of that and then coordinated with the previous ones. That way you guys would see the two together rather than separate. So just to guys, give you like the complete, how they kind of work together. So that's kind of why the numbers, one's before the other. But anyhow, the project location is as you see here in the red hatch. It's just west of that painted rock that you just saw on the northwest corner of Midway and Maguire. Here it is there in that red hatched out in the county area that was referenced earlier. The surrounding zoning, I won't go over, but they're the same as the previous hearing. Looking at the current land use, it is a large lot, single family use in the, the county. It's over the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer. Waste water provider would be the city of Post Falls. And as before, if there was any pre-existing structure, they would have to abandon the septic system and connect a sanitary sewer. Water would be provided by East Green Acres and nearby roads are the same as the last one, but just a little bit further west. But the nearby ones off to the east are Midway Avenue, Minor Collector and Maguire, Minor Arterial. Similar with the last one, annexations do get the right of way and easements with annexation. There is the location is, it's in that transitional area that was mentioned before. It's where we do kind of look at the, the other uses that are in the city and how does that transition going forward? And there's that project site in that West Prairie focus area. There is the road assignment there. There's your arterial and your collector and the location of the site. Once again, same discussion as last time, looking at how does this, the pocket, you know, that you look at the farthest distance being three quarters a mile, Midway about a half mile and Echo being a quarter mile. How is this going to transition in the future? Site the same goals and policies. You're looking at improving the transportation network, looking at getting the right of way along with that. Looking at different housing types and cited in the West Prairie to maintain quality standards, provide a greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness. Goal seven, could play a role, plan for and establish types of quantities of land uses in Post Falls and the community needs and city's long-term sustainability. And looking at the policy 15, looking at different housing. And looking at the policy 15, looking at different housing options to, to provide that need. I did cite here, two of them, homeownership strategy one, starter homes with affordability and homeownership and diverse housing types to meet the needs. One reason why I cited the two on this one versus the last one is we're not looking at a subdivision plan on this one. And so I did add an extra one on that because I don't know exactly what the intent is from the applicant from a housing type. When you get a R2 zone, you're open to all those options. And currently that would be duplex, a twin home, a cottage and a tiny home would be the predominance of what you'd be allowed. So we kind of covered the first two review criteria and looking at assigning zoning. Third one is looking at the demonstrable impact. Here is who we noticed. Here's what we, once again, same comments as before, no real concerns from who we've noticed on this. So any questions for me at this time?
Chris Manley. So you know, sir?
Oh, and by the way, we do have two things. We do, Chris Schneider's here. So if you have a transportation question, we do, Chris is great also. So second thing is we did get a, two public comments, maybe they were forwarded on, but they came in after the notice. Shannon's got them. And so if you wanted to elect to read it in for the record, but there are two, there is two comments that came in after the closing. So just wanted to bring light to that.
So that's, that's at the discretion of the chair. It's, it's kind of like brief, brief written testimony, but generally it's up to the chair to either admit untimely written testimony into the record if they find good cause for the delay and that the admission of the written testimony would not prejudice another party to the hearing. So I would almost treat it like the, the brief written testimony, should you so desire, and then just read it into the record and that way it's, everybody can hear it and everybody can address it on.
Okay. Advocate, name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jeremy Terzulli for the record. I'm a land use consultant on behalf of Josh Sir, Nick Beveridge and Joe Turner. Josh and Nick are here tonight. Ms. Turner could not make it. Group of, of local real estate professionals that saw an opportunity here to create some entry-level housing and so that's why we're here today. It's going to seem incredibly redundant because we are right next door to the Painted Rock subdivision. The review criteria for zoning, as Mr. Kimball pointed out, I thought that planning and zoning did a great job of, of discussing that, but I'll go over a few points anyway. So first thing we look at is the future land use map. The future land use map does talk about transitional. Whenever you see transitional, it sort of punts us to the focus area. And so within the focus area and the adjacent zoning and uses, we can get some direction for what would be an appropriate zoning in here. Focus area being West Prairie. The star represents our property. And there is directly from the Comprehensive Plan, the focus area, and I highlighted the area that talks about Maguire and Corbin, where they do talk about higher and medium densities along the commercial corridors and arterials, and we feel like that is where this property is positioned. We are proposing also a medium density R2 zoning designation, and I'll get into it a little later, what we are proposing. This group not being a deep-pocketed developer did choose to pause on any subdivision pending your decision tonight for annexation because you do have to provide in essence an 80% plan set for engineering for subdivision, which can cost a good $20,000 and they felt best to just pause on that and see how the council felt about annexation of this property before they spent that money. So these are the adjacent uses. That's Seltice right at the bottom of my slide there. Maguire Road labeled in red. You see how it's built out and again, this is incredibly redundant, but it's that commercial along the commercial corridor that is Seltice. We've got some county that remains in that pocket. The trailer court and everything else is sort of medium density as it hugs Maguire and transitions a little bit more towards that traditional R1, 6,000 square foot lots as you get further away from Seltice, Maguire and the railroad tracks. This is a citywide map showing uses and zoning. We're on the left-hand side of that screen and I bring this up, all those yellow circles show that development pattern and how it did play out in other areas of the city with the commercial along the major corridors. Higher density and medium density as it tiers away from those major corridors and we're in essence repeating that process pending, or if you choose to approve, we would be repeating that process in this area. The Comprehensive Plans and Goals, the staff report was incredibly robust in the goals and policies that they pointed out, a couple that weren't brought up in there that I thought were still pertinent, I'm bringing up here. Goal number 12, maintain the city's Post Falls, city of Post Falls' long-term fiscal health. We believe that creating a variety of housing options at different price points is going to be critical in creating a stable tax base in the city. Additionally, this development will be a different builder, same engineer, but different builder than the Painted Rock subdivision, which is sort of going to organically create some market competition between the two. Thus, I think, making sure that nobody can really set their price too high. You're going to have two people trying to sell their product first, so I think that's going to create a nice, healthy competition between the two, again, if you choose to decide to annex. Policy three in the comp plan, encouraging development patterns to provide suitably scaled daily need services within walking distance for those that may not have a car or would prefer to walk. These smaller homes on modest lots will likely cater to people looking to downsize or those starter homes. Those people in starter homes, a lot of times I know when my wife and I first married, we shared a car. One of us would walk or whatever. It should be noted that this area is about a mile and a half from the carpool lot there at Pleasant View and I-90. So dropping somebody that maybe works over in the valley or down in Cordillane and then keeping the car for the day is a possibility. It's walking distance to the school. It's walking distance to churches. It's walking distance to a convenience store, a gym, a park, a playground. I think it nails that policy really, really well. The goal of this development is going to be to provide those starter homes and those downsizer homes. Regarding demonstrable adverse impacts, that's been covered. All agencies had a chance to weigh in on this. No impacts were noted at the time. So moving on to the annexation and the only question there in this legislative process is, is the annexation of the property in the best interest of the city? So I went through the comp plan and I did a Ctrl+F just for annexation and went through every single place where annexation is mentioned. And I pulled out what I thought were those explicit guidelines regarding annexation that, that you all have to review. I thought that policy nine, encouraging an annexation of any county islands within the city. As Mr. Kimball pointed out, technically it's a peninsula, but about a mile and a half to the north, there is two parcels that don't complete that, but for all intents and purposes, this area does operate like a, like a county island. It is surrounded by city. Any residents in this area are utilizing city streets to get where they're going. They're using city parks and all of those types of things. Following of annexation procedures established in Idaho State statute and the city ordinances, that's why we're here tonight, having the public hearing. Annexation should leverage existing capital facilities. That sort of bridges right into policy 45 where it bullet points those. We did review the master plans in the area. Plenty of water at East Green Acres to service this area. Sewer, there is a 15-inch sewer main in Maguire that goes down to a lift station. That's all been appropriately sized in preparation for full build-out of this area. So maximizing that infrastructure that's already in the ground for this area. Parks, schools, emergency services, as I mentioned, being so close to the city, emergency services are already mobilizing to these areas when needed. And the transportation, they're already utilizing the street network. Seltice is wide open, has tons of capacity as well as Maguire. Those intersections are all at level of service A, meaning they're functioning perfectly. So we believe timing on this is, is really good. Regarding the Comprehensive Plan goals and policies, again, that's what my presentation is about. And then policy 46, to mitigate impacts of annexation through the use of service agreements with the developer. So I know that this council is elected by constituents that have concerns. You all have your own concerns about fiscal responsibility. I do know that multifamily is a hot-button issue for a lot of people and I do know that that some of you have stated goals to help some of this entry-level housing. So John pointed out what the allowable uses are in R2. And because we didn't bring a subdivision forth, he, he has to say that these are all the allowable uses, but the development team and I have talked and in essence, they want it to be an extension of Painted Rock. Single-family detached housing, they're willing to memorialize that with an addendum to the annexation agreement. A density restriction, we'd be more than open to that. The big thing again is those 50-foot wide lots. It allows them to get another four to six units in on this piece, bringing that cost down, creating that natural organic competition between the adjacent subdivision, hopefully making sure that the margins are, are good enough so that people can make a profit, but we can still get people that are currently renting into homeownership. That is the stated goal of my development team and we wouldn't be seeking any deviations from setbacks or standards within the R2 zoning designation in conjunction with those previous two restrictions. So we're, we're trying to, we know that Miracle on Britain did a really good job, that, that public-private partnership, that nonprofit. I think we've got some people right now trying to prove that the private sector can also deliver affordable housing and with the city's help and with the city's support, I think it's worth a shot. With that, I stand for any questions?
Any questions?
So yeah, you did a great job. I just checked off all the questions I had for you and as you answered them, so well done. But I did want to ask you if you could clarify, it sounded like you said R2 designation gives you a little bit more wiggle room in the lot size so you can make a little more money.
It's 100% about lot size. So R1 is 6,000 square foot minimum lot size. R2 does allow you to go down to 4,000 square feet. Our target would be between that like 4,400 and six, some might even be 6,000 by the end. But yes, it is about getting a tiny bit more density there, but we are willing to make sure that they're all single-family detached. The development team is interviewing builders right now. I think they've in essence selected one. They do have a home type that will fit on these lots, but we just didn't bring the subdivision forth yet because it can be very costly if, if we do not get annexation.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Testimony.
Regan, allow those two comments in.
Counsel, should we read the counsel's in? Comments in?
I'm okay with it with the, I guess gentle reminder to please get your comments in on time.
That was, that was one of the two points that Mr. Harrington pointed out is as long as there was cause for it, but we have no idea what that cause for the tardiness was. But counsel's okay, I'll read them in. In favor, not wishing to speak, Scott Krajec. Wishing to speak in favor, Josh, Josh, you can just come on up and speak again?
Do you want my address again?
No, just name, name for the record again, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Josh Sir, I'll try not to repeat anything I said earlier. Just wanted to kind of give you guys a quick bio on who we are. My partners, Nick, Joe and I are, we're all real estate brokers, longtime locals. Like I said, I'm five generations here. We're, we're bootstrapping this project and we feel very strongly that, that this is the right project for what the area and the city needs. I have a 21-year-old daughter that just had her first baby and they're in North Spokane and it's been, we've been trying for months to even find a place for them to rent here. It's, it's difficult. I know there were some comments earlier that, that there, there are a lot of housing types and there are a lot of places. I did a, a quick MLS search earlier in the week and, you know, in that under 400,000 single-family, there's 24 active listings for what would qualify for the entire median income for the area. So, so we believe it's necessary. You know, when I, I think when I bought my first home 20-plus years ago, it was 109,000 and you needed three jobs to do it. The, the numbers changed, but the three jobs part hasn't. So we're hoping that we can build this development and, and like Jeremy said, the single-family restriction is what we planned on. So that's, we don't want duplexes, we want homes here and hopefully this is something that, you know, we can be proud of, the city can be proud of and our kids can buy houses there someday. So appreciate everything you guys do.
Wishing to speak in favor, Nick Beveridge.
I'm Nick Beveridge, 6942 North Madeline Drive. So I, I moved here in 1992 when I was just five years old. Been here a while. I've seen Post Falls grow a lot. I remember when City Hall was like a, I think it was a trailer facing Spokane Street. So I don't think growth is necessarily a bad thing. I think what is a bad thing lately is, you know, I've been a real estate agent for 15 years and how unaffordable everything is out there. And I would say 90% of my clients that want to buy a house, they just can't. They can't afford it. And I've been in real estate for 15 years, but this is, it's just getting worse and worse every year. And I think the only solution is more supply. And I'm glad, it sounds like most of you guys are in favor of that. So I was going to try to argue some of that, but I guess I don't need to. I will give you some interesting stats, though. As an agent, I'm able to pull up custom stats and I pulled up in, in Post Falls, the last 12 months of data. That compares the smaller R2 lots that are approximately 5,000 square feet compared to like a normal R1 lot closer to, you know, 7,500 to 10,000 square feet. And there were 70 active, closed and pending, in Post Falls, single-family detached. And the average price was 3.99. And that is 23% below the average of the regular-sized standard R1 lots that you'd see of $519,000 is the average there. So, and you had 444 of those in the last 12 months. I think there's a huge demand. I know some people here think that there's plenty of affordable housing. I just don't think that's true. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Wishing to speak in favor, Josh Wise.
Josh Wise, 1905 West Kalawha Avenue. The Cordillane Area Economic Development Corporation, Jobs Plus, supports the proposed annexation into the Post Falls. We serve as the economic development organization in Cootney County as well as providing economic development assistance to rural communities throughout North Idaho. Our mission is to build a healthy economy for the region by strengthening the economic base, diversifying the economy, supporting the creation of new jobs and advancing workforce development. As you know, employers across our city are facing a challenge, attracting and retaining the workforce they need. While competitive wages are part of the equation, housing availability and affordability are equally critical. Right now, many employees are priced out living in the community. They serve forcing long commutes and limiting our talent pool. The proposed R2 zoning represents a practical step toward easing the pressure. The R2 zoning request allows for slightly smaller lots than R1, making the project financially feasible, while promoting housing diversity, walkability and efficient infrastructure use. By creating more housing options, we can better match supply and demand and open doors for essential workers, teachers, healthcare staff, first responders and many people who keep our local businesses running. This project reflects careful consideration and alignment with the city's strategic plan. This is not unchecked growth. It is targeted thoughtful development intended to address a clear and pressing need. As the voice for our business community, we ask you to consider this project as a way of supporting economic- as a way of supporting economic stability, strengthening our workforce, and ensuring our city remains a place where people can live, work, and thrive. Thank you for your leadership and commitment to balancing growth with the needs of residents and employers alike. Please do not hesitate to contact us if you need additional information regarding the support of this annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Next up, Ray Kimble, wishing to speak in favor.
Evening, Mayor, Counsel. Kind of an awkward place for me because I'm talking tonight in this public hearing as a member of the, well, really as, as a resident of the city of Post Falls, not being paid to do so, not being, not representing anyone. One of the things that I find really important is that when really in looking at this R-two designation with single-family, having done development work all over the inland northwest, much of the development is going towards these smaller lots. And the reason for that is because the price of the raw land has gone up so high that it, either the price point of the house has to be, has to match or the number of lots has to make up for that. And in doing so, but what happens is, is that we're, we're really looking at, so this R-two, single-family, four thousand square foot lot, fifty-foot wide, that really falls in line with a lot of the other communities that are just looking at, at doing these little infill projects that really work. They keep the price point at an affordable level. In this case, it works, you know, had the, had the timing worked out, there probably would have been a joint annexation of request from the adjoining property at the time you worked out. At this point, it didn't. But there is right-of-way acquisition infrastructure for Midway that comes as a part of this. There was a point in time in history in when, you know, Fieldstone was a far reach and it was a big annexation. And now it's completely surrounded. There's in, it's one of these things where I'm not as polished as I want to be. It's really important that we have single-family housing for entry level. It was important for me when I just got out of college to be able to buy a house at the end of a little cul-de-sac on a tiny little lot, a tiny little house, but it worked. And it got me on the homeownership train. And once you get on that homeownership train, eventually you get up to business class, maybe first class at some point in time. But if you never get on the train, you're never going to get there. And so these projects are incredibly important opportunities to get the people in our community. And many of them, I mean, we aren't getting many people moving from other places to get into entry-level homes. They're moving, but it's, it's the people who grew up here. It's our children, it's our grandchildren who graduated from high school, went to college, maybe, maybe work in the trades, but they want a place to live, they want to keep their roots here, and they need a place to do it, and this is one of those opportunities. Thank you.
Okay, now there's two letters that were submitted in, excuse me, in favor. My name is Chris Briner, Realtor and developer with EXP Realty here in Post Falls. I spent years working with buyers, selling, sellers, and builders in our area, and I have a clear understanding of what our housing market needs. I support annexing Midway Parcel and zoning R-two. We have a serious shortage of affordable detached starter homes. This project would bring the type of housing that young families, first-time buyers, and people looking to downsize are actively searching for. R-two zoning makes sense because it adds more homes while keeping the neighborhood feel intact. From my work in the field, I see every day how badly this kind of inventory is needed. It fits the city's long-term growth goals and will help keep Post Falls a place where people at different stages of life can afford to live. I encourage you to approve the annexation in R-two zoning. This is the right move for the market and for our community. Another one in favor. My name is Shane Zering, the broker and owner of Experienced Northwest Real Estate. I've worked in the market for many years and have helped guide numerous buyers, sellers, and now agents. With deep roots in the community and a strong understanding of our local, local housing dynamics, I've seen firsthand the challenges facing both homebuyers and those trying to build for them. I strongly support this request to annex Midway Parcel and R-two zoning. Our regional market is critically short on smaller detached starter homes. R-two zoning is ideal. It allows a smart density without sacrificing neighborhood character, and it creates spaces for young families, first-time homebuyers, and downsizing residents who can't find appropriately priced options. Working with both buyers and builders regularly, I see firsthand that projects of this scale and scope are exactly what Post Falls needs. The proposed project with smaller lots meets demand, supports walkable communities, and aligns with the city's vision. I encourage you to approve the annexation in R-two zoning. This is exactly what buyers need and is critical to long, the long-term health of Post Falls to help fight overpriced housing. And we do have one wishing to speak in opposition, Julie Hensley.
Julie Hensley, thirteen sixty East Warm Springs Avenue. I just have two worries about this property. One is on Policy Three. There's no close grocery stores. There might be a convenience store, but there is actually no close grocery stores to this annexation. And I feel like for Policy Nine, it is almost creating more of a county island because it's infilling and those homes in the middle are going to end up becoming an island. So those are kind of my two worries is that we have these nice open lands. As somebody said earlier, we're missing out on our 4-H opportunities. You know, my kids are wanting to do it and it's like you, you have all these HOAs that have all these policies and you can't even keep livestock or anything. And the people who came and did the, what do we need in this housing development? Not one thing said, hey, do we need properties on acreage annexed into the city? Not one thing said, hey, fill this in so that way we could actually have housing with horses and livestock and things that families around here might actually want. So those are kind of my concerns with this, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Applicant wish to rebut anything you've heard?
Yeah, I, I, I have, I have kids that do 4-H. I do have a few acres, chickens, dogs, goats, the like. I like that as well. I live over the ridge up in Hauser, but the comprehensive plan is, is, as I pointed out, it's explicit that we prioritize the county islands because this is not adding to the tax base of the city of Post Falls. This property is blight to the letter. It's uninhabitable. The home is uninhabitable. It is falling down. There are junk cars, junk RVs, boats all around it. Who knows what fluids are leaking out of those right now? It is the right time for this property annex. And I, I don't, I don't disagree that our community also needs livestock and to maintain North Idaho and the 4-H kids. I just don't believe this is, as this area redevelops, which is what the comp plan is, which is what annexations are about, when it's time for an area to redevelop, what's the best use of that land? And it's clear that it's time for these couple of properties to redevelop. And the proper thing, according to your guiding documents, is to bring it into the city, help guide what that development looks like. I'm not saying we push the 4-H and the urban farms out to the periphery. It is a conundrum. However, I do believe that this is the appropriate time to annex this and to redevelop it for community needs. If there's any further questions, I'm here. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time.
Can I ask a question of the developer? So this piece of property differs from the previous one in that it's in the
I'm sorry, I'm struggling to hear you a little bit.
This piece of property differs from the previous one in that it is not explicitly called out as medium density. It is in a transitional area. I do wonder if R-one to the smallest capability that can be done would be more appropriate as it transitions from a higher density to the stated lower density of the rest of this region? Is that something that the developer, that the owner would be interested in? Should annexation proceed?
I don't think so. And because we did analyze this and we went over this a lot at the P and Z hearing, it's kind of in this awkward area where now we move one parcel west of Maguire. However, now we're up against the Union Pacific Rail Line, which is pretty busy. And so a traditional six, seven, eight thousand square foot lot with a three thousand square foot home, I think would be devalued by that highly trafficked UP rail line that does have, you know, ten, twelve trains a day that go through there.
But it would be more appropriate to put more people next to the highway in a higher-density land use?
What I look at more is property value. Like if a more traditional, like I said, twenty-five hundred square foot home, three-car garage, it's not going to be any cheaper to build, but I do think your end buyer is going to devalue that property over one that's not abutted up against a, a rail line. And when we talk about the difference in density, it's about seven, not jamming them in there so that, you know, it's a safety issue, there will be a fence. I don't even know if we completely butt right up against the rail.
You don't.
Like there's that one little piece that's around and there's about a seventy-foot swath, I think, that buffers from there. But yeah, we, we thought about it long and hard. And we do believe, based on this little triangle wedge piece up here, being that close to the rail line is ultimately probably going to bring a lower price. And therefore, an R-two with smaller lots seems a little bit more appropriate.
Okay.
That was our, our evaluation.
Thank you. Close of public hearing. First question up is on the annexation.
Well, is annexation of the property in the best interests of the city?
Yes, it removes a portion of the island, follows established annexation procedures through state code, and minimizes city's fiscal impact through development.
I agree. This is, this is not a case of some out-of-state developer coming in to put apartments on the prairie. This is, these are local guys who care about the community, who want to build starter homes for, which are going to be for locals, priced for locals. That's, that's a very important thing to have. I think R-two is the best zoning designation. I know it's, it's transitional, so we have a little more flexibility here. But this is much closer to the railroad and this area is, is all really awkward because it's bounded by the railroad, commercial, and industrial. And it's like, if you try to put a large lot of state home there, I think like, like was said, it's, it's not going to have the value that, that it would need in order to make sense. Nobody wants to, to kind of buy a million-dollar home that's going to be right next to the railroad and kind of in an awkward zone like this. I, I, so I think this makes more sense as an R-two, as the sort of family-friendly starter homes that, that we've been trying to get through some of the, the changes that we've done before. So I would like to see this come in, I think with the same restriction we did on the other one, and have these, this be like one cohesive project. I think that makes a lot of sense.
I would say I'm honestly a little less excited about this one because the residents of the city make much higher use of Maguire Avenue than of the other minor collector, I forget the name of the, of the road.
To Midway?
Midway. So there, there's less benefit to the existing residents of the city of Post Falls financing this because we don't get a complete two sides of Maguire, we get half of Midway. However, because it is two lots coming at the same time with the same engineer, it does present an opportunity to have consistent growth into a county pocket. So I'm less excited about this one, but I'd be inclined to support it.
Mr. Plouffe?
Yeah, it's very similar to the last one. And it accomplishes the goals that, that we have. And I'm a big fan of starter homes at this point in the city's development. I think it's, what's been presented is that we don't have enough of that. And I have eight children, so I would like them to, some of them do be able to find a place to go. I can't, can't help them all out, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stigler.
Does the city council desire to annex the proposed request? Is it to the benefit of the city? I tend to agree with Counsel President Malloy. I don't see the total benefit, the compelling benefit to current residents as we don't gain any rights of way or easement on this one. I guess I'm also struggling with the pressure being put on council to make this decision based on promises, based on conjecture of what it will be that are things that the council cannot control. So, and, and that can't be followed up on after the fact. We keep talking about building starter homes and the affordability of these houses, which we've heard from developers many times before, but that is by no stretch of the imagination any contract to what they will actually be sold for. And my, my hesitancy comes from the fact that many townhouses have been built in the city of Post Falls that, that break the four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand mark. Some of the ones on Maguire, I think when they were first listed, were actually quite expensive and in that range. So, so when we're asked to look at a certain question and we're told that that's all that we're allowed to analyze, but then so much more information comes in to make the question look different, that's what I'm struggling with. My other concern is that we had a lot of experts in the industry tell us that this is what residents are needing and wanting and desiring and must have. But I haven't heard a single resident come and advocate that these houses be built right now, that they, as soon as they break ground, they are wanting to move in and they can afford them at the prices that would be built. So, I mean, we annex the property to the east, we get easements in there. There is some benefit that you could argue to that. I wonder if, similar to other kind of duo land uses that we've heard, perhaps we let the piece of property to the east start to build out, see what that looks like, and then readdress this, this piece of property then. So I guess no is my answer after that. I'm so sorry.
Number one opposed to the annexation.
Yeah, since we're a little bit more divided on this one, I think we'd probably do well to take a vote on the annexation first.
So, Counsel, does counsel wish to proceed with the annexation of this property? Mr. Davis?
Yes, absolutely. I, I don't know, I, with the annexation, is there a need now? I'm sometimes baffled because we've had so many conversations about the need for affordable housing. And then somehow it's like, well, yeah, but I'm not sure. The people that I talk to, the citizens, the people that live here all the time that have kids that are between the ages of eighteen and fifty, are constantly looking and trying to find a way to have their kids live here. I lived in an eight hundred square foot house when my wife and I first got married. Was it beautiful? No, but it was ours and we took care of it. So I am absolutely for it.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Yes, I'm in favor for reasons we talked about.
Mr. Malloy?
Less enthusiastically, but yes.
Mr. Plouffe?
Yes.
Mr. Stigler?
No.
Thank you, next.
Now that we've made the legislative decision, we're on to the
Yes, 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 yes.
Review and approval criteria under
Yeah, no.
For zoning. Is the proposed zoning district consistent with future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan?
Transitional land use is a designation with the West Prairie Focus Group, so yes. The subject site is adjacent to property designated as medium density. So, yes. Anybody else?
That works for me. Is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
Say yes, one of the goals and policies is the diversity of housing types. So same as, same as the previous public hearing, orderly expansion into county islands. This one going at the same time with the same engineer is, is about as orderly as you can get. There is an expansion of the transportation network, less impressive than the previous parcel, but there still is that along one side of, so I would say yes.
And does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the city?
Nobody commented.
Okay. Someone pull the motion? Unless there's further discussion.
Yeah, the development agreement that
Yeah, the development agreement that has it being detached, single-family homes.
I think he's got you covered again.
Okay.
I would move to approve the linger annexation ANNX dash two-four dash one-one contingent upon a development agreement limiting it to single-family detached homes.
Second.
And that'd be assigned R2 with that contingency.
Second stand?
Yeah.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stigler?
Aye.
Westling?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you very much. We've had two public hearings, we're heading into a third, you want to take five?
Yes, five would be wonderful.
Five-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order. The next item up tonight is the fiscal year 2026 budget and foregone tax hearing. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I appreciate an opportunity to speak about some information that's been coming out about primarily the current year's budget that we voted on last year, which I think may have some impact on what people see. It's probably going to be fifteen, twenty minutes, it's a bit long. Can I have that kind of grace to?
It's good by me, it's okay if we, we'll let him lead that in now?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Okay. All right. And just so you know, we'll listen to Mr. Malloy, we'll hear the presentation from staff, then we'll go to public comment.
I've decided to speak up today to address some information that has been publicly introduced regarding the fiscal year 2025 budget, which is our current budget year that we voted on last year, specifically related to projections of anticipated state funding. This issue was first raised by Scott Hoag in a video posted to his Scott for Post Falls Facebook page on July 24th. It was followed up by other posts, which included correspondence between him and Senator Doug Okunowitz. This is culminated in a letter sent by Senator Okunowitz to the mayor and city council of Post Falls, which has also been made public. First, I would like to say thank you to both Mr. Hoag and Mr. Okunowitz for discovering the error in the projections of state funding dispersments to the city of Post Falls for fiscal year 2025. We did not know there was an error, and because Mr. Hoag and Mr. Okunowitz noticed something goofy and spoke up, we were able to root, cause the issue, get it fixed, and assure it never happens again. If that was where the story ended, it might have been the local politics feel-good story of the summer, concerned citizen working with a state senator and the local city council to solve a problem. Unfortunately, that's not how it ended, and honestly, that's not really how it began either. The posts and letters contain some massive inaccuracies coupled with innuendo and accusations that border on reputation destruction and character assassination. I normally make it a personal policy to stay out of local elections, except for the position I currently occupy, obviously, but I have to work with whomever wins, and I trust the voters to make the best decision. As you probably all know, Mr. Hoag is a current, is currently running for mayor of Post Falls, and Senator Okunowitz is serving on Mr. Hoag's campaign committee. However, given the sheer amount of disinformation that has been spread by both, somebody needs to speak up for the truth. I've chosen to do so for three reasons. First, I value my integrity and will not have it called into question based on falsehoods. Two, I don't want tonight's proceedings to be tainted by disinformation. And three, I'm not running for anything this year, so I don't really have anything to gain by speaking up, unlike many of my colleagues who are running for election this year, so hopefully you all have more reason to trust what I'm presenting. That said, get comfortable because it's going to take a while. The problem, as Senator Okunowitz stated it in his letter, that is that the reason, the reason the Post Falls City Council voted for a seven percent tax increase last year was due to projections anticipating lower dispersments from the state. That was a reason, but far from the only one. I should note here that Senator Okunowitz's assertion that the seven percent tax increase represents one point four five nine million dollars is false. That number includes tax revenues from new growth and annexations. Senator Okunowitz doesn't seem to understand that new growth means increased demand for city services, which obviously costs more money to provide, or he's being intentionally disingenuous by including those projected revenues into the seven percent tax increase to paint us in the worst possible light. Either way, it's wrong. Incidentally, the correct number is right there in his letter, but he circled the wrong one. Before moving ahead with the reasoning for the increase, let's back up and answer a few questions about the projections themselves. First question, who makes the projections? Like most cities in Idaho, Post Falls is a member of the Association of Idaho Cities, or AIC. Among many other things, AIC provides projections of state funding dispersments tailored to each city's fiscal year, which often differ from the state's fiscal year, which is the case with Post Falls. Senator Okunowitz didn't know this until I told him last week. Mr. Hoag should know this, as he worked for the city for decades and, and was the head of the city's largest department for years, and was heavily involved in the budgeting process. Anyway, the projections at hand here came from AIC. AIC's projections have historically been pretty darn accurate until it became virtually impossible for anyone to forecast anything, starting in 2020 for obvious reasons. We haven't had any reason to doubt their projections until now. Were mistakes made in the fiscal year 2025 projections? Unfortunately, yes. Once Mr. Hoag and Senator Okunowitz brought the potential problem to the public's attention, city staff and the mayor have engaged in multiple conversations with AIC to investigate. AIC did find a calculation error, which caused their projection to be about nine hundred thousand dollars lower than it otherwise would have been without the error. So again, I do offer a sincere thank you to Mr. Hoag and Senator Okunowitz for finding a problem, thereby enabling AIC to identify the cause and fix it so it doesn't happen again. What is the impact of this error? That's impossible to know at this point because Post Falls fiscal year 2025 is not over yet. Post Falls will continue to, to receive dispersments from the state until the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30th, so we won't know the actual receipts until October. Unfortunately, we have to vote on the fiscal year 2026 budget before fiscal year 2026 starts. That said, it is clear that Post Falls will receive substantially more than the faulty projection indicated, likely somewhere right around that nine hundred thousand dollar mark. To put that into perspective, that represents roughly two percent of the total budget. Projections are never one hundred percent accurate, nobody has a crystal ball that can see the future. Projections are educated guesses, this one unfortunately happened to be off by more than usual due to a calculation error by AIC. Also, state funding is by far the sole source of funding for the city. The city has dozen sources of funding, all of which must be projected to do budgets. Sometimes they're over, sometimes they're under. Moving on, why did I vote for the seven percent tax increase for fiscal year 2025? For me personally, inflation was the number one reason for supporting the tax increase. And incidentally, some of the numbers we saw in the workshop beforehand, and you may see tonight, are slightly different than this because I thought it had been thirteen years since the Post Falls had a, had a net tax increase. I was corrected later that it was fourteen years, I didn't have time to adjust my numbers, so they're a little bit different. Anyway, Post Falls went thirteen years without a next, net, net tax increase, that's thirteen years. The cumulative effect, effect of inflation during that period was thirty-six point six percent. We raised taxes by seven percent, so we're still about thirty percent short of keeping up with inflation. And three of those seven percent were one-year-only increases for, for facilities, so that's coming off everyone's tax bill for fiscal 2026, meaning even if we vote for a three percent operations increase for fiscal year 2026, the overall tax bill will be flat from fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2026. More on this in a minute. For comparison, the cumulative tax increases for other neighboring cities between 2018, I ran out of time to go back any farther, and now are as follows. Corder Lane, thirteen point six percent, all ongoing. Hayden, sixty-three point six percent, which sounds goofy, but this includes a voter-approved levy override in 2023 to fund law enforcement. Rathdrum, six percent, all ongoing. Cootney County, eleven point eight three percent, all ongoing. Post Falls, again, seven percent, with three percent dropping off after fiscal 2025 and only four percent ongoing. Note that the different cities have different budgeting and accounting methodologies, so this isn't a perfect apples-to-apples comparison, but it does provide a general idea of what's been going on amongst the local municipalities over the last eight years. And remember, Post Falls went thirteen years without a next net tax increase. Another reason is that the state legislature has squeezed the taxing authority of cities. House Bill 389 is the primary culprit. As Jeffrey Wardle put it in his May 21st, 2021 article in the Idaho Business Review, quote, "HB 389 prevents growth from paying for itself. When undeveloped areas are improved, the assessed value of such increases and it generates more property tax revenue. Historically, taxing districts have been able to include such development in their budget calculations at one hundred percent of the improved value, generating taxes to pay for services they consume. HB 389 limits the new value on the tax roll to ninety percent of the value for new construction and annexed property, and eighty percent of the value of all properties in expiring urban renewal districts. Proponents argue that this provides tax relief for all taxpayers. Instead, it forces existing development, otherwise known as current taxpayers, to subsidize the new growth," unquote. So, since municipal authority to make new growth pay for itself has been limited by the state, we have to make up the difference by raising taxes on everyone. Senator Okunowitz voted in favor of this bill. In the interest of full transparency, there, transparency, there is an asterisk next to the thirteen years without a next net tax increase stat. After HB 389 took effect, since we could no longer tax the full value of new growth or newly enclosed urban renewal districts, we did the math and increased taxes on everyone, just enough to cover the loss in the new growth revenue imposed by the state. Also, in response to case law indicating that streetlight operations and maintenance should be a tax rather than a fee, we did eliminate the streetlights fee and replace it with a tax back in 2017. The net effect was zero, basically taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other. So that's my asterisk on the thirteen years that a tax increase, which is actually fourteen years I learned later. HB 389 also limits cities' access to foregone taxation authority to one percent for operational purposes and three percent for facilities, the latter of which expires after one year and does not add to the city's budget basis. Thus, last year's seven percent increase is only four percent ongoing beyond the current year. It used to be my philosophy that we not collect additional tax revenue unless and until we absolutely, positively have to do so. But with new limits on cities' authority to raise funds, it is now more prudent to raise the funds we are very likely to need before we absolutely, positively need to, rather than have the city skid into the financial ditch if something unforeseen happened, as it often does. Limiting foregone taxing authority punishes cities that have been historically frugal, as those cities who tend to exercise their full taxing authority every year don't have much of a foregone balance anyway. There appears, appears to be a growing sentiment in Boise that foregone taxing authority should be eliminated altogether, which further pushes cities to exercise what's left of their taxing authority sooner than later, because it may not be there at all in the future if and when they need it. Another reason I supported the tax increase was that our budget was bolstered by the closure of multiple urban renewal districts during that thirteen-year span. There aren't any other districts slated to close in the next fifteen years, so we can't count on that income anytime soon, and the state has limited the taxable value of that growth, as I already noted. Yet another reason is that some federal funding sources, see primarily ARPA, that carried the city through COVID without having to raise property taxes went away. And yes, the projections from AIC showing a decrease in state dispersments was another reason I supported the tax increase. Unfortunately, we know now that those projections were miscalculated for fiscal year 2025. That doesn't make any of the other above problems go away, though. I still likely would have supported the increase without the miscalculation. I should point out again that projections are never accurate. For fiscal year 2024, actual receipts from state revenue sharing were about four hundred fifty thousand dollars below projections, so we had to make up for that, too. Although, as I mentioned before, we didn't have that exact number until after we passed the fiscal year 2025 budget. During the recent discussion with the city, AIC mentioned that it is difficult to provide revenue projections for the highway user funds, as the general fund portion is discretionary, and it can be, and it can vary depending on the year and how much the legislature determines they will fund to this account. So, what the state giveth, the state can taketh away. Anyway, I expressed all of these things at public meetings during last year's budget process, and Senator Okunowitz chose to cherry pick part of one comment I made and publicly hit me over the head with it, which I don't appreciate. Run it like a business. This, this is what was asked of me when I was first asked to run for the Post Falls City Council and what I promised to do when I was elected. I don't believe it is prudent to run a business by the seat of one's pants, living only for the moment. Budgeting conservatively and planning ahead for unforeseen circumstances is the only way to run a business, in my opinion. Planning only for the current year and with the expectation that everything is always going to go exactly as, as planned is a recipe for ruin. Planning and budgeting can be extremely complicated, so please allow me to oversimplify. Say I own a business. I have to try to predict two, two things, how much money is going to come in and what my expenses are going to be. I recently had my building inspected, and the inspector said I will need to replace the roof in about five years. I get an estimate for a new roof, which is about thirty thousand dollars, so what's the best thing to do? Don't worry about it until it springs a leak? Wait five years and then borrow thirty thousand dollars and add interest payments to my expenses for multiple years? Or start planning for it now? To me, the answer is obvious. I budget to set aside six thousand dollars per year for the next five years. I project that my revenues will be a hundred thousand this year, and all our expenses to be ninety-four thousand. Fast forward a year, and miraculously, everything happened exactly as I predicted. I go into the next year sitting on six thousand dollars, which is earmarked for the new roof. I go into the next year sitting on $6,000, which is earmarked for the new roof. For the next budget year, I again project $100,000 in revenue and $94,000 in expenses and plan to set aside another $6,000 to go towards the roof. Now it appears that my budget has increased by 6K, even though I made no changes to projected revenues or expenses, because the 6K I socked away for the roof, the previous year rolled over into the current year's budget. Fast forward another year, I had a really good year and revenues were all up by $3,000. What's the prudent, conservative thing to do? Hand out $100 bills to the first 30 customers that come through the door or add that extra $3,000 to the roof fund? Personally, I would add it to the roof fund. It was predicted that my roof would last another three years from this point, but predictions are never perfect. It could last longer, it could fail sooner, and it could cost more than 30K by the time I actually replace it, because inflation sucks. So I rolled the 6K from the previous year, plus the 9K from the current year into the following year. I predict the same 100K in revenue and 94K in expenses, but now it appears my budget is up to $115,000, 21K of which, of course, is the roof fund, 15K of that having rolled over from the previous two years. Fast forward six months and, oh no, a fire starts in the bathroom, causing $3,000 in damages. What's the conservative and prudent thing to do? Shake down my customers for an extra $3,000? Or use $3,000 from the roof fund to fix the bathroom? Fortunately, I saved the 3,000 in unbudgeted revenues, so I could fix the bathroom without any issues. Rents are repeated yearly until I've set aside enough money to replace the roof. Then I spend the 30K to fix the roof, my budget for the next year is back down to $100,000, and I start putting money aside for new siding, which has about five years left in it. This is how I would run a business and this is how I run my household. As it turns out, the city does not do this. The city takes all the unspent revenue and puts it into cash, throws it in the basement. There's seven of us up here, so we each pick a night. Mine's Friday, because I like to start the weekend off right. And Friday nights, I come in here and I go to the basement, I roll around in money for about two hours straight, because it's awesome. Or, that's a complete lie, and this extremely oversimplified business example is a version of how the city is actually run. We put together multiple planning documents that aim to look out into the future, identify likely deficiencies, estimate when those deficiencies will occur and how much it will cost to remedy them, and budget accordingly. We have the facilities master plan, the water master plan, the reclaimed water master plan, the streets master plan, the parking master plan, and so forth, all culminating in the comprehensive plan. We actively solicit public input on these plans, so that we identify and prioritize projects and personnel that support what the community wants in the long term. There are hundreds of millions of dollars in deficiencies and projects we're planning for up to 20 years out. Money set aside for projects not started or completed gets rolled over into the next budget year. Other items that were budgeted for but not expended also get rolled into the following year, a good example being personnel, as in we budgeted to add three police officers, but we only ended up adding two. This unfunded expense gets rolled into the next year's fund balance, ensuring we have enough money to pay for that third officer when we're able to fill the position. Sometimes revenues are higher than projected or expenses are lower than projected. Again, this money goes into the next year's fund balance to help fund projects identified in the various master plans. Not once in my 14 years on the city council has anyone ever said, "I have no idea what we're going to do with this money." It all goes to fund something that is already in the plans that were developed with public input. This methodology has allowed us to pay off debts early. City Hall and the Police Department were both paid off early using rollover fund balance, for example, and avoid taking on new debt when systems fail earlier than expected, saving the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest expenses over the years. Of course, sometimes revenues are lower than projected or expenses are higher than projected. One example of the latter happened recently when the bathrooms of the Chase Sports Field Complex burned down earlier this year and the city has to shell out roughly $200,000 to replace them. That's above and beyond what the insurance covered. Fortunately, the city has enough money in the fund balance to complete this unanticipated work. This, I believe, is just smart and conservative budgeting, and that's how I would run a business. On August 9th, Mr. Hoag posted on his Scott for Post Falls Facebook page that the city had an $800,000 surplus from the fiscal year 2025 budget year, stating that we had discussion, quote, "finding new ways to spend it," unquote. This is incredibly misleading. That money was not surplus or profit, it was a rollover of funds that were not spent on items budgeted in fiscal year 2025. We did not, quote, "find new ways to spend," unquote, anything, as Mr. Hoag put it. The discussion was centered around which projects that have already been identified long ago with the various master plans, with the exception of the failing HVAC unit system at City Hall, which is a new problem. Should these unspent dollars be budgeted in fiscal year 2025? Should these unspent dollars budgeted in fiscal year 2025 go to funding in the proposed 2026 budget? Actually, it's going to be proposed as a budget amendment. Nothing is official, of course, until the city council votes on it. Mr. Hoag claims that he would return the money to the taxpayers, but his history says otherwise. When Mr. Hoag was the chief of the PFPD, his department was often the largest recipient of fund balances. I don't ever recall him saying, "No, don't spend that money, my department just cut my budget." To be fair, I believe Mr. Hoag made very good use of the money that he got. He further claims that the city's budget has more than doubled over the last five years. How is that possible when we've only taken a 7% net tax increase over the last 14 years? Mr. Hoag also seems to believe that Post Falls' total budget is $159 million, as he stated in the same comment under his post, which is wildly inaccurate. It's actually under $50 million, so he's off by over 300%. AIC's current numbers look awfully good in comparison to that. Mr. Hoag has pledged to cut $1 million in spending his first year in office, which would be really easy to do when he thinks we have $110 million more than we actually do. I wonder how he intends to spend the rest of the $109 million. In the same post, Mr. Hoag states that the city council is contemplating a 4% tax increase this year and, quote, "this follows last year's 7% tax increase. If approved, an 11% total property tax increase in just two years." Yet again, Mr. Hoag has no idea what he's talking about. As I mentioned before, 3% of last year's tax increase was a one-year-only increase to pay for facilities projects. That 3% does not carry over to the coming year and does not count toward the city's basis for calculating future taxes. So even if we do approve a 4% increase for fiscal year 2026, that's 8% over two years, not 11. As for the 4% fiscal 2026, what he claims is what we're proposing to increase, we are bound by state law to publish a proposed budget in advance of the public hearing, and the published budget is the highest we can legally go. We can't publish a proposed budget with a 0% increase then vote to raise taxes by 3%. That's not legal. We can publish a proposed budget showing a 4% increase and vote for a lesser amount. So the 4% discussed was the council telling city staff, 4% is the highest we might be willing to go, so base your proposal on that and we'll review it. Of course, it's kind of difficult and would be incredibly irresponsible to make any decision without reviewing the proposed budget, which can't exist before we give our high-water mark. We can always go lower, we can't go higher. Speaking of going higher, it has also been stated that Post Falls collects and spends more money than Coeur d'Alene. This, yet again, is complete falsehood. In fiscal year 2024, which is the latest year for which we have complete, actual numbers, Post Falls collected $15,302,447 in property taxes. Coeur d'Alene collected $27,909,515. The population of Post Falls is roughly 45,800, while the population of Coeur d'Alene is roughly 57,400. Do the math and Post Falls collected around $334 in property taxes per capita and Coeur d'Alene collected 486. Granted, because the two cities budget and operate differently, it's difficult to get an accurate apples-to-apples comparison. For example, Coeur d'Alene has its own library and fire department, although the bond for the Coeur d'Alene Fire Department is not included in their general fund numbers, while Post Falls does not have these things. Post Falls has its own 911 center and pays for streetlights out of the general fund, which Coeur d'Alene does not. But the notion that spending in Post Falls is wildly out of control is just plain wrong. Having mentioned that, prior to last year's tax increase, Post Falls went 13 years without one? No other city in the county can make that claim. It should be noted that the city was not always in such a good position or such a sound position. Up until about 2000, the city basically budgeted year to year and constantly came up short. They had to literally borrow money using what's called revenue anticipation notes to make payroll for the first quarter of each fiscal year until the first property tax payment showed up at the end of January. That's not a smart way to run a business. It cost the taxpayers unnecessarily for debt service and left zero buffer to cover unanticipated expenses or lower-than-expected revenues. The fiscal year 1998 budget actually had to be revised mid-year to remove several projects due to lack of funds. Since then, the city has implemented impact fees to help make growth pay for itself, created and updated the various master plans mentioned before, and created the undesignated fund balance reserve, which have all been used to smartly expand and update public facilities as the city has grown, to pay off debts early, to avoid taking on debt in the first place, and to be able to handle unexpected expenses without having to throw a bake sale. Not to mention, go 13 years without an effective tax increase.
14.
14. This is good conservative management, and apparently Mr. Hoag and Mr. Okunowitz want us to rewind the clock 25 years. So yes, actual state revenues for fiscal year 2025 are going to come in higher than AIC errantly projected. By exactly how much is yet to be seen. The city still faces a lot of challenges. Should this council continue to plan and budget conservatively to assure the ongoing financial health of the city? Or should we roll the dice and hope nothing bad happens in fiscal year 2026? Thankfully, we have an opportunity to hear from you all tonight. Finally, I fully recognize trust in government is low. Personally, I believe that that's a good thing. I'd like to point out that five of us up here, we're on the DS. The five of us up here on the DS, we're here to vote on the last budget. The other two who voted on the last budget are no longer here, but all of us were rated, vetted, and endorsed by arguably the most conservative political committee in the entire state, the Cootney County Republican Central Committee. Mayor Jacobson and I have both been endorsed by the KCRCC multiple times. All of us voted in favor of the tax increase last year. Did the KCRCC get every single endorsement wrong? There are two options here. One, Senator Okunowitz and Mr. Hoag are correct. We're all corrupt and lining our pockets with taxpayer money, which means the KCRCC's rating and vetting system is horribly broken and should never be trusted. Or two, the KCRCC's rating and vetting system is working just fine. All five of us who were endorsed by them had solid conservative reasons for voting the way we did, and Senator Okunowitz and Mr. Hoag just don't have any idea what they're talking about when it comes to running a city. Clothes with the city's books are independently audited every year by an outside firm for accuracy and legality. Jason Faulkner, our Director of Finance, has been awarded the Governmental Financial Officer Award every year since he's been here, and Shelley Anderrud won it many consecutive years before that. Every penny the city collects and spends is in the agenda packets and is on the city website. This is the most transparent government I've ever been a part of or ever heard of. We're not hiding anything.
Thank you, sir.
That's it?
That's it, sorry.
Do we need another break? That's one time I am going to allow replies, because I thought it was well said. Thank you, Joe. With that...
I guess he needs a break.
I was just kidding. We'll just wait one second.
If we have any authors, Joe, in the crowd, would you read audible books? Would you do that for a living? It's pretty impressive.
It felt pretty mush-mouthed to me.
No, it was good. I thought it was very good.
With that, I'm going to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget and foregone taxes.
It's already opened.
Oh, it already opened it?
It already opened it.
Well, I just wanted to make sure Aaron felt like he was...
It's doubly opened.
I interrupted you right after.
Sorry, okay. I didn't, okay, forget it. We're going.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here for the 2026 budget hearing. As we talked about a little bit earlier in the workshop, I think this is maybe our sixth touch of the budget since January. It's been a long journey. It seems like it's always budget season. As far as an introduction of what we're going to cover in tonight's presentation for the hearing, this is the annual budget hearing. It includes a hearing both on budgeting and/or reserving foregone levies, and I'll come back to that in just a second. It also sets the budget for the next fiscal year. The focus tonight is largely going to focus on the general fund. We will talk briefly about the enterprise funds and dedicated funds as we go through, but generically, most people want to hear about what's happening with general fund. A quick preview of where we're going to go. This is a difficult budget year, as has been the case for a few years running, not just for us, but essentially every local taxing district across the state and other states, honestly. Other states that have the same type of tax system that we do, where you're based on a budget rather than a levy, they're all in the same boat that we are. So it's going to be a difficult budget year. We're dealing with the effects of capped new construction annexation revenue, as Counselor Malloy alluded to. We have very limited capacity for new expenses. Our general fund budget will be close to $2 million more than fiscal year 2025. We are recommending a 3% budget increase, but not any use of foregone taxes this year. Even with that 3% budget increase, you're likely looking at a lower city tax bill for the average home, and that's because of that 3% one-time-only levy for capital coming off of the levy, by and large. So with that as a preview, we'll jump right in. So as a reminder, we're going to cover some of the basics upfront. Council sets a budget amount, not a tax levy. That means that you set a budget amount, that amount is divided across all of the assessed taxable property in the county or in the city, excuse me, and that derives the levy rate that is applied to each of those properties. Individual taxes, what happens with all of our individual tax bills, is based largely on what happens to your valuation versus other residences, as well as other businesses and industrial uses. If your home has increased in value faster than all of those other uses, a portion of the taxes that those other users used to pay is now going to come out of your tax bill. If your valuation has gone down relative to those other uses, a portion of the taxes that you used to pay is going to be paid by the other taxpayers. That happens even without a budget increase. So regardless of what happens tonight, some people's values are going to go up higher and they're going to see a little bit more taxation, other people's values are going to come down, they're going to see a little bit less taxes. The other thing that impacts individual taxes is the levies by other agencies. You're all members of lots of taxing agencies and they all levy taxes, so the cumulative amount of all of those tax levies is what your tax bill is made up of. So turning to statutory budget caps, Idaho has caps on new construction annexation and urban renewal dollars. I'm not really going to hit urban renewal tonight, because we don't have a closing district this year. As Counselor Malloy alluded to, we have, for the last three years, four years, we have dealing with a 90% cap of market value on new construction annexation. What that means, and let me step back for a second, new construction annexation levy is really there to generate revenue, to provide new services to new growth areas. So as that growth happens, that value comes in so that we can hire the police officer to patrol that new neighborhood, the plow operator to go plow that street. That's what that revenue is really intended for. What happens with the 90% cap is that 10% that's missing gets shifted onto existing taxpaying residents and property owners in the city. The other source of revenue that we have is we can generate general taxes from existing payers that is based on 3% over the highest budget over the last recent years. Again, that is really aimed at providing costs to fund inflation and increase costs to provide services to the existing residents in the community. All of this is tied to an 8% cap, so you can't go over 8%. That excludes foregone levies, but we're not proposing that this year, so that doesn't really come into play. Foregone balances, speaking of that, the city has a foregone balance of nearly $3 million. What that means is that annually, the tax-based budget in the city could be almost $3 million higher annually. What that tells you is that the city, over time, has been very conservative in how they budgeted. You create the foregone balance by foregoing budget increases and banking that against a future need. That becomes difficult now because we have caps on how much foregone balance we can take out. You can take out 1% each year for operating expenses and a one-time-only 3% take for a designated capital item that comes off the next year's levy. So it's a difficult way to pull back out $3 million in the event of an emergency.
Warren, can you confirm for me, please, if we were to take 1% out of the operational that will carry forward the next year?
Yes, operating carries forward.
So that 1% would be added to what we would then calculate our percentage of the next year off of that?
That's correct. So turning to the city budget history, since 2009, the city has taken 4% new ongoing general property tax revenue. In 2017, there was the 6% offset for the streetlight fee reduction that did not generate any new revenue. Last year, we took the 4% general increase, that was a 3% and a 1% foregone, as you alluded to. That is ongoing new revenue. There was also the 3% one-year-only foregone levy for capital needs. That comes off the levies this coming year. So again, that's telling you what's happened, is the city has largely relied, over time, on new growth to pay for existing services to the existing residents and property owners in the community. Just to make sure that this is perfectly clear, when I'm talking about general property tax revenue, that's ongoing, that's excluding the new construction annexation, urban renewal closures, because that's really that new growth element that we're talking about. So what does that look like over time? Here's a graph for you that shows you cumulative inflation since 2010. That number is just a hair under 40%. So today, it costs 40% more roughly than it did in 2010 to do the same thing, more or less. If you look at the revenue line, which is the dashed line at the bottom, it shows you the ongoing revenue. So in 2018, you see the hit of that revenue coming in for replacing the streetlight fee. That stays flat until last year, when we start, we see the additional 4% increment, or actually, 4% with a one-year, 3% on top of that. That shows you the, the ongoing revenue. In some ways, this is a misleading slide, because what it's not showing you is the new ongoing revenue. If you want to see new ongoing revenue, that bottom line stays flat all past 2017, 2018, 2019, all the way out to 2025, when we raised 4% new revenue. So essentially, since, in that period of time, we've raised 4% new revenue to offset 40% inflation. You'll see that reflected in our history of our levy rates per thousand and valuation. In 1980, our levy rate, $4.54 per thousand, that went over ti, up over time to 1995, when it hit $6.76 per thousand. And then you see it start coming down, and that's, as the, the values increase, the levy rates come down. To the most recent completed fiscal year, 2024, the levy rate was down to $2.39 per So pivoting from that to some of the things that we're challenged with this year, we continue to see increasing costs. Thankfully, the costs are not as high, the increases are not as high as we've seen the last few years, but we continue to see inflation going up, 2.2%. This is March CPI numbers. We use the March numbers because that's the most recent data, when we provide you the first estimates in our first budget workshop, so that we can keep those numbers consistent over time. Construction up 1.85 year-over-year. You can see the last year's numbers. Insurance has gone up a 7.7%, which sounds terrible until you look at the last year's increase of 30%, which is $100,000. That's, again, outside of our control. That's largely due to large storms on either coast, where the reinsurance market for insurance property has gone through the roof, and we get to pay the bill, as you do on your homes probably as well. Utilities have gone up significantly. Again, we're also looking more locally. Labor costs are going up. The Cootney County Average All Occupations wages are up 7.6 year-over-year. Last year, the wages were up 7%. So that's almost 15% in two years, that the, the average for all occupations has gone up in Cootney County. This is state data. Our health insurance premiums, we're budgeting for a 10% increase. I think this is largely driven by, or what you're seeing is the impact of the cost of living there going up, as evidenced by housing prices. Even though the market is norming a little bit, we're still looking at 8% increases year-over-year for listing prices and, and what things are selling for. The fair market rent rates, according to HUD, up 16% year-over-year. So we're still seeing increasing costs to live here, which then drives the cost for labor costs, to be able to attract workers to work for your, for your entity. Pivoting from that to revenues, so we've talked a little bit, some of the challenges, then we'll talk about some of our revenues, what we're anticipating. For 2026, the anticipated state revenues from, again, this is from AIC, they provide the, the projections for sales and for the highway accounts. You'll note, looking at this, that for fiscal year 2026, we're seeing increases from fiscal year 25. However, we're still not quite back to where we were for fiscal year 2024. I would note that the liquor projection is provided by the city. We essentially look at the trends and the sales data. We're not seeing a lot of increasing consumption and purchase of alcohol in the city, so we're not seeing the, the increases that you were seeing in that sort of COVID peak, when people were at home and not going to bars. One thing I want to point out quickly, the highway dollars, and there was a reference to the $900,000 error from AIC, a reminder that those funds are designated and can only be used for transportation projects. And so it's not money that we can use to fill other needs in the city. A quick reminder as well, sales tax receipts are currently lagging in the state. They're, they're better than last year's actual receipts, but they're lagging the projections. Last Friday, the Idaho General Fund Revenue Report came out, and a couple of quick things of note, for the month of July, the general fund collected approximately $39 million less than anticipated, about a 10% miss. Sales tax collection in fiscal '25 came in weaker than expected, especially once calendar year '25 began. So they're, they're seeing slowing receipts on the sales tax side.
I'm sorry, that, those were the state's numbers, not our numbers, correct?
So this is, yeah, the state, looking at the state's general fund and...
Okay, we didn't miss out on $39 million.
No.
Okay, thank you.
That would be terrifying.
I know, I was like, ah, duh, duh, duh. Okay, great.
Just, just pointing out that, that...
Projections aren't perfect?
Yeah.
There's that piece as well, but also that, that while we expect that we will see more sales tax in fiscal '26 than we saw in '25, those projections might have some fluff in them, just because the receipts are actually coming in slower than anticipated by the state. So to pivot a little bit to the basis of our projections, we talked about this at our last workshop, I've slimmed this down a little bit, but because I, this was a public hearing, I wanted to get this out there. As I mentioned, we take our projections for highways and sales tax from Idaho, Association of Idaho Cities, they base their, their projections on state data. We have a different fiscal year than the state, so you can't just look at the state's fiscal '25 and the city's fiscal '25, match them up, and say that's what the numbers look like. So when the state's fiscal '25 money is coming in, we're receiving that in two separate fiscal years and accounting for it appropriately. Also to note, AIC updates their projections annually, and because we're always having that sort of three-year fiscal year cycle that we're working through, you will see that they'll have a mid-year update on their projections for the fiscal year that you're currently in, for the rest of that fiscal year. So how does that play out in reality? So on the sales tax side, I went back to the 2025 AIC manual and pulled out, what did they show us first in 2024 for their initial projection for sales tax? And that was $5,083,000. They updated that projection down because the receipts were coming in slower, and their mid-year project, projection to 4.5 million. For their fiscal '25 projection, they projected that at $4.32 million. They're highlighted because those are the two numbers that were based on our fiscal '24 budget and our fiscal '25 budget. The difference there was about a $762,000 shortage that we were going to experience based on their projections, and that is the exact number that we based our budget on last year. The 762,236, if you go back and look at the budget and the presentations last year, that's the number that we used. So how does that compare to actuals? So in fiscal '23, the budgeted amount, based on AIC's projection, was 4.598. We received $28,000 less than that. In '24, we were short, based on AIC's projections, our budget, almost $450,000. It's unclear exactly where we're going to land this year. We still have another month and a half in this fiscal year. We've received 3.6 million year-to-date. We're probably going to be right around that projection, a little bit up maybe, but it's going to be relatively close, it's looking like. So stepping away from how we project, moving into our anticipated taxing revenues. So our highest carryforward levy that you can base your tax levy on is $16.4 million. In addition to that, the anticipated new construction and annexation tax revenues that are provided by the county, we're anticipating new construction revenues of $360,000, and just about $6,000 for annexation values. We're also showing a one-time increase based on a state tax commission changing an interpretation regarding expiring urban renewal districts. That is a one-time hit of about $150,000 of additional revenue. So taking all of that together, the, the basis, the starting point, is about $16.921 million.
Warren, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
The '23 to '25 budget, actual versus sale, you're saying we're on track for year-to-date. That's for the adjusted, now corrected AIC projections, right? Or that was, that was...
I would have to go... So that's based off of, I'm going back to the last slide, so we budgeted 4.32 in '25, and that's what we have, so that's against the budgeted amount.
Which was the amount that was given to us in error?
No, this is, this is sales tax. That was in the transportation.
Oh, that was just for transportation. Okay, thank you.
So we were about $16,000, $16,921,000 for total revenue. Before we move on to what we could anticipate with additional revenues from tax increases, I wanted to show you briefly what we're seeing from the fiscal impacts of House Bill 389. Taking aside the, the great big one that stands out, that reflects the closing of an urban, of a large urban renewal district last year, the, the yellow box is annexation values, the light blue box, it shows you the values for new construction. And if you notice, as we move from left to right across this, you'll see that those boxes are getting smaller, and that's because we're receiving less revenue because of the impacts of 389. It's where that cap is kicking in, it's, and it's driving the levy rate down, which then displaces some of that, the cost to our existing ratepayers.
Wait, it's not that we're having less annexation and new construction since 2021?
We're just generating less revenue. It brings us less revenue.
These are real numbers, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Not, it, it doesn't reflect the amount of annexation, it reflects the value that we receive for the annexation, for the new, the new growth.
So it probably does include, if it has slowed down in the last year...
Right.
Yeah, so you, you pick up, if there, if you're seeing less annexations, that would be reflected in that, that number. So the potential budget increase revenues, so if the city council were to elect to take a 1% general increase, that's about $164,000. 2% is $328,000. 3%, $492,000. On the foregone side, which we're, again, not recommending, nor requesting tonight, a capital, 3% capital is about $522,000. Operating is about $174,000, is what you'd be looking at on revenues there. As again, a reminder, our budget assumption is new construction annexation plus 3%, no Estimated differences, fiscal '25 to '26 between the various lines. So the proposed, the budget, excuse me, I'm getting caught in mouth now, like Joe. The budget proposal overview, this is kind of a bare bones budget this year. We're pretty limited capital expenditures without dedicated funding. We will probably, with your direction, bring you a budget amendment to fund a portion of the requested capital for fiscal '26 out of rollover dollars from fiscal '25. That would happen after the beginning of the fiscal year. Operating budgets have been capped at 2025 level, 2025 levels, minus contracted expenses that we have to incur, and those are largely, by and large, software costs. We're not proposing any new employees. We're proposing smaller than we've, than we have seen recently, salary increases. We're also proposing to not fund an incentive pay program that we have had over the last few years to try to keep our employees here and not have to recruit as often. We are continuing to, to fund our dedicated replacement funds. On the personnel side, again, no new employees are proposed. That doesn't keep up with our staffing plans. Ultimately, that bill comes due, and we have to deal with it, but in a year, it's not going to kill us in one year. Smaller wage increases, the COLA this year, again, based on March CPI, is lower than last year's, obviously, because the, the COLA, excuse me, the CPI has come down. We're proposing a 2.2. On the merit side, we're proposing a 2.8 merit increase rather than 4. The merit increase only goes to employees who are below the cap for their position, and if they've earned it. The, the COLA goes to all employees. The thing that I would point out here, again, this doesn't keep up with what we're seeing with average wage growth in the county. It also isn't meeting the goal of trying to help our employees get through the, the range of their, for their position in 12 years. We think that's a sensible goal. It helps to, to motivate and keep happy employees. We have, some of our neighbors around us who moved through the ranges much quicker than that. We've talked about cordialane for their police, I think it's five years. Fire's a little bit slower than that. Their general employees, I want to say, is seven or eight years to get through people, through those ranges. It's hard to remain competitive in the long term if we don't figure that out. I would say we are working on a salary survey this coming year, so hopefully that will provide us some information. And again, in, in, in one year, this isn't killing us, but it's something we'll have to deal with at some point down the road. On the personnel side, I did want to show you the real value of the funding increases versus the costs that we have. So to provide that 5% increase and to pay for the 10% benefits increase, that's about $1.321 million. If you take all of the sales tax revenue increase of about $126,000, the new construction and annexation, that one-time adjustment from urban renewal, and the 3% budget increase, that gets you to about $200,000 less than the cost of providing for the salary increase and the benefits. That's, we are a service industry, we are, our biggest asset and our, our biggest expense are our employees. I referenced the capital items that we'd be funding if the council elected to do so out of 2025 rollover funds, so that we can fund some of these items out of 2026. It's about a $700,000 cost total for these items. These are all items, by and large, that were requested during the budgeting process for needs that, moving into 2026. The source of the fund balance, by and large, the funds to pay for the carryover dollar, the carryover expenses comes from positions that were kept vacant over time during the last year. That pays essentially all of it, but $75,000. Those positions are essentially full now, so those dollars aren't, they're not going to be available forever, but there is one-time savings from salaries that can pay for some of that capital need going forward. Moving into dedicated funds, on the vehicle replacement fund, we are recommending a $500,000 contribution to the vehicle replacement fund. Ultimately, we'll need to increase that amount to 2.9 million in future years to be able to meet all of the anticipated needs for replacing vehicles as they, they age out of our system. Currently, we have a balance in that account of about $12.4 million. This year, we are replacing about $2.11 million of equipment that is aging out of our system. On the street replacement account, in 2026, we're recommending $3.6 million going to the account, which is the cost of doing the South East Way reconstruction project. We have a fund balance of 4.8 million. We typically fund that at $678,000, or, we're funding that at $678,000. Our typical expenses out of that line, year in and year out, depending on the year, about We're going to fund a number of projects with impact fees. These are fee-driven from growth. Turning to the facility construction fund, we are recommending, moving forward, and council just approved a contract for an architect to begin work on the operations center. That's about a $6 million project. We have a fund balance of about $12 million. We're recommending a contribution this year of about $860,000 to that fund. Moving to our enterprise funds, the projected revenues in our, our water fund is about $4.6 million total. Our operating expenses are about $3.4 million, and we have a fund balance in the operating replacement, about $15 million, and the capital account of about $23 million, to meet the, the planned needs over the planning horizon. We're not proposing any new employees in the water fund. Some of the capital highlights, we're going to be working on an update to the master plan, a contribution towards water's portion of the operations center. There's going to be a wellhouse project and replacing a water line and a distribution project planned for the next year of the water fund. Water reclamation, we have about 20.2 in operations revenue. We have operating expenses of about $8.26 million. Here's what our fund balances look like for the water reclamation fund. We are intending to regrade one position in our wastewater team. Capital highlights, we're going to move forward with solids and dewatering project for about $12 million, continuing to, to search for land acquisition opportunities for our land application that we will need just over the, the near horizon. The secondary treatment design will be ongoing for about $2 million, and then wastewater's contribution to the op center is about $840,000. The capital highlights, we got a pipeline project, the 12th Avenue Forest Main, lift station project of about $1.85 million, and $49,000 in equipment. We also want to highlight that we do stormwater out of that fund as well, and we will be doing a study, a utility study, and that will be about $315,000. Solid waste, this is a contracted service, so we contract with a garbage hauler who provides this service for us. Revenues are about $4.7 million. Our current rate is just under $14, typical. The anticipated rate will go up 1470, more or less. Our operating expenses are about $4.5 million, and we have a $1.3 million fund balance. So turning to the impact of the proposed increase of 3%, if you have a home assessed at $650,000, your prior year city taxes was $1,190, that rate would go to $1,175, with the 3% increase, new construction and annexation, that largely is reflecting the cost of that, that one-time capital foregones coming off of the levy. If your home is assessed at $800,000... If your home is assessed at $800,000, you're going to go from 1531 to 1511. The projected levy rate per thousand dollars would come down to 223, so that levy rate continues to come down. This does not reflect the shifts that we talked about in valuation, so if your valuation is changing, that can have an impact on this. It also doesn't show you any impact from state property tax relief funding that the state has provided. They budgeted $50 million this year to go to that. It's hard to calculate that because the state needs to know all of the, the budgets across the state to know how, how widely they're going to spread those dollars, so there will be some additional property tax relief from the state this year. Turning from that to some actual homes, this is a batch of 17 homes that we've tracked over time. If the, as a group, the average assessed value was 290 in 2020, and you can follow that through over to 2024. What that shows you is over time, the first three years on that slide, the valuation went up pretty markedly. And as a result, their tax portion, their share of the tax burden increased, going from $743, $743 to $890. And then that plateaued and started coming back down as the valuations normed compared to other sectors of the, the, the real estate economy locally. So you're seeing that value comes down, this is largely based on the land valuation piece, so it's gone from 890 to 815 to 797. Projecting that forward, if you look at the orange bar, that is what happens with, if you take no additional taxes, the 3% one-time only capital levy comes off, the, the, the tax bill comes from 797 to 766. If you take the new construction annexation plus 3%, which is what we're recommending, you're seeing still a tax reduction from last year from 797 to 783. As just an aside, the, the, the pink bar, I guess you'd call that color, that would be if you took the full 7% forgone, the 3%, which is not on the table tonight, that would be what, a 15, $16 increase over last year. So your motion options tonight after the, after the hearing, obviously you need to take public comment first, is to, you can direct staff to prepare an ordinance to bring back to you to adopt the budget as presented. You can direct staff to make changes to the presentation tonight and bring you a higher, up to the, what we've advertised, or lower amount. We will then work in that into an ordinance and bring that back to you for adoption. If you're going to do that, we would need to know how much of a change do you want to have one way or the other so that we can make that change and have it in the ordinance for the next meeting. We also need, because we have to have a hearing on reserving forgones or expending forgones, we need direction for you, from you, on what we should do with our forgone balance. You can direct us to take up to the 1% forgone. The 3% towards one camp capital, that's not on the, the budget, no, the, the docket because that wasn't advertised. Or you can direct us to bring back in a resolution reserving that additional forgone balance into the future. And that's it, questions?
Questions of Warren at this point, before we take public comment.
So, when we talk about, just, this is for me to talk through and for everyone, I guess, to understand, there are really two, we say budget, but there are two budget numbers that I think are really important to differentiate, which is, you had talked about the fake 100-plus million dollar budget that we have. When our real budget is like 47 million and some change, we're not talking about taking a percentage of 47 million. We're talking about taking a percentage of only what we tax, which is around 18 million, so.
Six, maybe it was 18, yeah. That lower, yeah.
Work my way backwards here.
I don't know, this paper that I have says 18.
16, nine, how about we split the difference?
It was advertised at 18 because that was the highest watermark, if you took absolutely everything, the original notification, it was at 18.
Okay, um, so I just, I just want to make that clear because it was confusing to me. And so we're not looking at taking 3% of like that almost $50,000, we're taking, we're looking at taking 3% of just the $18,000, which is the only amount of money we can control. And based on your slides, it sounds like we only pay for people, streets, vehicle replacement, and a public works savings account, which isn't really money that we're actively spending except for the one contract. And then maybe we're putting some into our facility, and then we're matching facilities as well for that public works. My concern is that's all we can pay for out of the amount of money that we actually control that we get. The rest of the whole city operation, paying for HVAC, electricity, all sorts of other things, comes out of, out of funding that we can't control. And I think I had, I had asked to see some places where we were trying to like cut our expenditures or pause what we were spending in a really meaningful way, and I know that we talked about some things that we won't be doing. But I guess, after your presentation, which is really enlightening and I've learned a lot, thank you. I, I'm just really concerned that we, we spend, what is that, like 20, 30%? Is the ta, our taxes are like 20% of our total budget? And so we're trying to play catch up every year because we haven't increased, so there's inflation, but we're also, we've also grown with this money that we have no control over. And so now, we're trying to play catch up on that money by increasing our, our taxing instead of maybe looking at the areas that we have, we have built our, our house on unstable sand, so. I don't know, I guess that wasn't really a question, Warren, I'm sorry. There you go.
To be clear, the, the, it is the 16 for.
It is.
The, the 18 is the high watermark.
Okay.
It would, it wouldn't be a 3% increase on the 18, it would be a 3% increase, or whatever, whatever is determined.
I estimate, which was last year, it's 16.
Over the highest amount of last year, which was 16.
Even then, my very quick addition of the things in your presentation though add up to 18? So then we actually even fund less out of our taxable, taxable dollars.
So I, I get that, maybe not so much a question, but I guess my comment to you would be on, on trying to conserve and lower costs. If you go back to this slide, that's part of how you can make that happen. If we weren't doing that on the regular, you wouldn't be seeing a 4% ongoing tax increase over 15 years, 14 years, if we weren't constantly trying to do that. It's just how, how you have to make things work when you're working in a local entity. You just, there's not another revenue stream, and so you, you delay things or you don't do things. I believe Shelley also shared with you all today a memo that shows a number of items that we've pulled out of our budgets for this year that we're just not going to fund, so we, we are constantly looking for ways to save dollars. And you're right, there's, there's the revenue side of the equation and there's the expense side, and ultimately, you have to look at both to make it work, and, and we try to do that pretty consistently.
And if I, if I may, and let me know if I'm out of order, but one thing that didn't get mentioned either is that, also to, to be able to pull this off, the 40% inflation and much less than that has, has been increased efficiencies. And we've invested a lot in, in new software programs that we can have fewer people crunch the same numbers. We've invested in new equipment that, you know, operates faster with the same or fewer number of operators and that sort of thing over the years. The, the issue is, we came up to last year and pretty much all the juice was squeezed out of that turnip. So, but that's, that's another thing that I think the, the city staff has done a really good job of, is investing in, in better systems and efficiencies, so we don't have to keep up with inflation just to do it.
An example I would give, and this is older a little bit, but it's one that I kind of like because it's one that annoys me. I don't know how many of you have paid bills with other public agencies, and every time you go to pay the bill, there's this little add-on charge for the convenience of paying with your credit card. We did that, we had that right up until COVID. And we decided we really wanted people to pay online, and so we would remove the fee and didn't charge the fee anymore, and lo and behold, more people paid electronically. And while we were eating that incremental value of that fee, our efficiencies went up more than offsetting that because we had to have fewer people processing hand checks. And so those are the types of things that we, we look for, is, is there a way, even if it's going to cost us a little bit of revenue, that we ultimately make up more in the long run?
Thank you. Comments? Wish, not wishing to speak in opposition, Jennifer Johnson. Post Falls has one of the highest, if not the highest levy rate in the county, why would they need more money? Wishing to speak in neutral, Summer Bushnell. Ms. Bushnell, do you want me to read your comment, or do you want to just come up? A name for the record, please.
Summer Bushnell, resident in Post Falls. I don't begrudge you guys working on this. This is like Dante's Inferno and the different levels of hell, the kind of math that's not fun. Just a comment, thank you to everybody that was working on that. I'm going to ask you to not take the forgone, I think you should do, adopt the budget as presented with the 3%. I was listening to what Mr. Wilson was saying. From my outside perspective, and I'm not as involved as I could be, it doesn't seem like there was much of an attempt to reduce the budget. Like he just said it was, but the general public's not seeing that, maybe you guys aren't being transparent or vocal enough about it. I had emailed you all months ago, I'm not sure about the newer guys, about considering reducing the budget by 3%. And I didn't really get much of a response. So I'm saying, please don't take the forgone and reduce the budget by the same percentage you would want to take the forgone. And just be more transparent about that, because all I'm seeing is we're keeping it the same, and now we have to increase the percentage we take. And that's sounding like that may not be what's going on, but that's been my perception, so that's something to work on. So please, adopt the budget as presented, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, you care to rebut? Close of public hearing. I'd like to make a comment, I'm not going to vote on this, obviously, because it's.
You don't know that yet.
Unless someone abstains, unless someone abstains. Follow up on what Mr. Malloy has said is, you know, a lot of misinformation out there, and understand, the city has done a good job basing their budget on the most current and the best information available. So we had issues, we received a notice that the city had made an error in reporting for money, or reporting money on these transportation funds. And I think Ms. Andrew checked into it and she reached out to the Idaho Department of Transportation who said that there was no error, it was a change in the legislation, and so it was in fact reported correctly on our side.
Correct.
The other issue was, that had been brought up was information from Association of Idaho Cities. And we're not here to throw them under the bus because they do a tremendous job for us. But when this came up, I reached out to them and they jumped on it, and they called me back and said, we're looking at it in more depth, wait, because I was going to have Shelley call them, and they says, wait, a little bit, let us finish checking this out. And they did find where, that one bucket of money on the transportation funding had not been included. That was on the stair, that was on their part. But we base our budget on the most current information available. And we've seen, we've seen that impacted by inaccurate information received by the county on new growth, for example. And so what we have to do is, we have to again, look at the information that's available, that's what we base our budget on. So that AIC can go in and reforecast their budget during the year, we don't do that. And so we adjust accordingly, and as Mr. Malloy said, if funds are available, excess funds are received, we will apply those funds to the unfunded needs of the city. Yeah, again, I'm sorry to tell you, but there is no basement full of money that we can roll in, Joe. But what we do is, if we don't fund those needs, they're going to come forward in future budgets and we're going to have to pay for. So again, I, I would like to commend the staff for the job they have done in helping to bring the city to the position we are in right now, where I think we're fiscally prudent. We've planned for the future, I know that, that's a huge issue, you have to plan for the future. What happens if something's not done, or, or something goes out and you've got to come up with a million to $2 million in order to pay for that? And I was talking with Shelley earlier, and it goes back to when we used to have to rely on the revenue anticipation notes, just to make payroll. When I first started with council 27 years ago, we did not have reserve funds set up. And now we have, we have been able to fund those accounts so we can replace the assets that need to be replaced on a rolling basis without having to come up with huge amounts at any one time and increase budgets accordingly. I, I love the slide you showed where it was a flat line with one bump for streetlights and then last year. I think the staff has done a very good job in again, preparing the city, or putting the city in a sound financial position. Again, I, I just wanted to comment, make those comments before we start in on deliberation. Would you like to start?
I got 20 more minutes of stuff to.
Break?
Yeah. Just kidding, I've said enough.
Eric? Well, I just wanted to, I'm the new guy, and I'm getting less new every month that goes by in these meetings. And yes, it is purgatory style math, Ms. Bushnell. And, but I think Joe's business analogy was incredibly prescient. And I think that what I've noticed as the new guy here is that the city actually is run pretty dang efficiently. And, and staff does, does a pretty good job and, and the direction they take from us, they take seriously and work to bring back, you know, what, what we're looking for. And, you know, we, inflation is climbing, and it's not going to stop climbing. And if we don't keep up with the city's needs and anticipated or real, we start digging a hole, and that hole is going to be hard to get out of before too long. And you start funding things with bonds and that costs everybody more money, so. And, you know, I'm, I'm a property owner, I have to pay these taxes too. And when I see the numbers that Warren presented for us, seeing that if anything, the increase would be nominal, based on the city's portion of the property tax. And, and best case scenario, it could actually go down. So, you know, I'm, I'm all about finding new efficiencies in the way that the city operates, but I think we've really seen the staff strain to bring things down. And there's just some things that are unavoidable, so, this is my.
Thank you, I'll stick later.
I don't think that there's a way, unless we do more cuts, that we cannot have to take an increase this year. My concern is that with how it's laid out and the way that we're looking at these numbers, that we are setting ourselves up to have to take an increase every single year forever. So when we talk about being prudent, we do a really good job of setting money aside for replacement funds, for big ticket items, and making sure that we have those savings accounts set up. I just, there's something in here that I just can't quite identify that just makes me so uneasy that we're, again, we're trying to play catch up of this time of prosperity where the city may have been managed well, but it was, it was funded in a way that just, we just can't have anymore and we're not going to keep getting, and so we're trying to make it up each year by increasing taxes, but we're not, I don't see that we're doing anything to decrease the need to have to make that up year over year over year. Because we can't not give people raises and that, and that, I mean, just our personnel is costing us more than our new funding. Just that one thing, so how, how does it stay solvent even then? And so it's not so much that my comment, I don't know when the appropriate time to do that is. My vote was phrased by someone as a protest vote, and it's not that, it's just that I have real concerns that this isn't just a vote for next year, this is a vote for, yes, this is how we would like to keep doing things, this is the right way to keep doing things, and that's what I'm concerned about is we have set ourselves up to have to take this every year by, by planning for really big things that maybe we just can't have the best of all of these things, even if we do future planning for that money. Maybe we need to reevaluate that, and that's, that's what I'm a little bit frustrated with, so.
Thank you, Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I, I share some of those concerns on the long-term scale of things. It looks like we're starting to lose ground in the budgeting process, and it's not a promising sign. Obviously, inflation has driven a lot of that, we've seen that 40% inflation on that graph, which is absolutely insane. We need to end the Federal Reserve and return to the gold standard, but until then, we're stuck with every system is in place. And state law seems like it needs substantial reforms to, to help cities with this because I, I don't think the. because I don't think the track is a rosy picture long-term, really, for any city going forward. And I think it's going to take state-level reform, because there's actually very little that we can do. As we've discussed here, only like a third of the city's general fund revenue, or less, is from sources that we actually have any control over. And the rest of it comes from the state, and we're kind of at their mercy. Or it comes from whatever the status of the economy is. If people from Washington come over here and buy more stuff, that helps us. And if they don't feel the need to anymore, then that hurts us. And there's a lot that we have no control over at all. And I'm not a big fan of the whole budget process, and I obviously hate property taxes, like I hate all kinds of taxes. But we are operating under the framework that the state legislature gave us. And they're telling us, you have to operate under this framework. And a lot of the things that we do at the city are unfunded mandates. So, state law says you have to do this, and you have to tax people on property in order to fund it. And they don't necessarily give us help with that. I would love to see some reforms in there. And I know there have been proposals to replace more or all of property tax with some sort of a use tax or a sales tax. I would love to see something like that come through as a long-term solution. But in the short term, you know, the first priority, I think, is keeping the ship afloat. Having said that, there were a bunch of budget documents that we got just today that council members had asked for. One of them was a list of budget cuts that Shelley sent out.
Given today, I don't have time to evaluate them.
Exactly. I think staff has put a lot of work into the budget. And obviously, there's been extra time that they've had to incur for maybe countering some disinformation that's been spreading through social media. And so, when we get a couple hundred pages of budget documents the day of the hearing, I think I would feel more comfortable if we were able to push this out and continue the public hearing next normal meeting, and then have more time to look into this. I think that would be a more prudent choice for us right now.
I would just like to echo, the state reform is absolutely needed. I think it's incredibly difficult when potentially part of the problem is pointing the finger at us. That's super frustrating. But I will say, I had to spend 10 years in planning and zoning, and I always thought to myself, man, we've got a pretty incredible staff. But having been here since November, I am continually blown away by the work that the staff put in. I did open up some of the files that we got today, and I did see that there were, I would say, some significant cuts made, things that were removed. But again, as Councilman Malloy said, it's being run as a business. And when you run things as a business, there's going to be years that are leaner. And there's going to be years that, even though people don't agree, growth pays for itself. So, to me, I think where we stand right now, I think we're in an incredible position. I am also concerned about the future. But I think the staff, and I think the council that is here now is working very, very hard to make sure that we're set up for long-term success. So, I'm comfortable with the proposed budget.
I would move to approve the budget as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
Well, can I approve it in two weeks after I get to look at the document?
How does that work timewise? We have mandatory limitations.
It becomes tricky. It can be done, but it becomes tricky. We'd have probably dates from you for a special call meeting, because we have very limited window to get the budget ordinance adopted. So, if you continue the hearing, make your decision, the next meeting, you're probably looking at a special call meeting. Find the calendar. So, the next meeting is the second, so you're probably...
So, Warren, can we bring two ordinances forward? One at zero and one at three?
In theory, we could do that as well. That's another option. We could bring you two ordinances. The tricky bit is if you want something, if you want multiple variants, that's going to be harder to do. We could still do that. It gets to be a little extra work trying to figure out how many variants to where we're going to cut to make those additional variants work. But we could bring a couple, two, three ordinances, and you pick and choose. That's one approach. The other approach would be to set a special call meeting sometime, probably after the second, but probably before the 12.
I don't want to create extra work for staff, to be clear. I don't want you to have to go through the process multiple times. I would just like some time to actually look at the documents we were sent today. And I know that Counselor Ziegler asked for that as well by email. And so, I think that's...
Yeah, and fair enough.
That'd make me feel a lot better about all of this.
We've responded to a whole bunch of inquiries over the last couple of days, and so, we've gotten things out as quickly as we can. But we certainly recognize that some of those responses came out today. And it's not, we don't love it, you don't love it, but that's as quickly as we could get them out, given the volume of information we're trying to put together.
I would just say, if council opts to table this and continue it down the road, and if a special meeting is going to be necessary, please respond. We have, in the past, had people not respond, and we could not get a date confirmed, which makes it very difficult on staff. So, if, in fact, that's a council's choice to proceed down that road, please watch, and if we do get a special call and date request, respond as soon as possible.
But you're saying you can just bring the resolutions to the...
So, we could, in theory, bring multiple ordinances, budget ordinances, to the next meeting. The tricky bit is, you have the option of essentially 3% increase, 2% increase, 0% increase, 4% increase.
1%.
So, we were looking at creating five different potential budget ordinances, which means creating five different levels of cuts to make that happen, or potentially, in one instance, adding something back in. That's a little bit of work. We can figure it out, but it does cause some additional work. So, I think ideally, if you're going to want to kick this down the road and go down that path, giving us maybe a more limited range that we're trying to figure out, so that we're not trying to put together five different ordinances. We also need to do the resolution on the forgones. It sounds like what we're talking about is reserving the foregone balance rather than spending it. But that's a little bit easier, because I think we have a better direction from you tonight on what to anticipate on that side.
Okay, we have a motion second on the table.
We do.
We should take a vote on that.
Roll call, please.
What was the motion?
To approve budget as presented. Seconded by Mr., motion made by Mr. Malloy, seconded by Mr. Davis.
Davis?
Aye.
Sig leader?
No.
Westlin?
Nay.
Lou?
Nay.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion fails. Next motion.
I move to continue the hearing at our next regular meeting.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Should I give you what you need, Warren? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Well, one more question, though. Does anybody have any interest in taking foregone?
No.
No.
Okay, so can we have a motion that we can have the foregone resolution done anyway that we're not going to?
Yes.
Okay, I would move to have the staff submit the foregone resolution that we will not be taking any foregone taxes this year.
We'll second that, too.
But reserving the authority? Do we have to have that?
Yeah, we have to have a resolution reserving the foregone authority.
Okay, if that's what you need, that's what I...
So moved. Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, fiscal year 2026 fee hearing. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Volker, Finance Director.
No way, ma'am, sorry. Public hearing, right? Open to public hearing.
All right. Tonight, we're going to talk about the fees, which couldn't be, shouldn't be too long.
I have another speech about fees.
Okay, cool. They shouldn't be too bad. I gave the handouts in the packet, so everybody should have those on there. The proposed fees were in the packets. I was just going to give a rundown on what the proposals will be for the, and then I'm just seeking for guidance from council or having an approval. And then, we can come back to the next council meeting with the fee resolution. With the proposals for the water rates will be, what we're proposing is a 1-1/2% increase. Waste water, with the proposal, is a 2-1/2% increase. With cap fees, we do have our cap fee updates, and I have those rates here. With the water cap fee, the proposal will be to go from $3,320. It'll go down $43 for next year for $3,277. And the cap fee for Rathcrim will remain the same for $4,603. With the new cap fee will be reduced from $7,675 to $7,621. And those are both based on FCS studies that we have initially, they did the initial study on. They turned over the worksheets, and so, my office maintains those. And so, we run the calculations every year based on what they provided and the guidance they provided. So, we have those. Impact fees, we have, it's been a while since we did an impact fee study. And so, we update those, and the suggested use of those is with the ENR. That's a 1.97. And we have a contract with, it's now Republic Garbage Service. And so, their increase is 5.2, and it's based on different indexes that they have, along with also the cost of diesel. And so, that's going to be a 5.2 charge. And so, based on what the current fees are that we charge for, in my office, for utility billing, from the current fees from 2025 to 2026, at the end, there's about a $2.84 increase for wastewater. I'm sorry, $2.84 for a total, not just, it's for the garbage, water, wastewater, and water usage, if you used 5,000 gallons. What I wanted to point out also, if you look, if you had time to look through the packet, there was, not only was there the water, the wastewater, excuse me, but parks had also, and recreation, had also updated some of their fees. So, that is also noticed in the update of the fee resolution as well.
I have questions about those. Is that a slide that you want me to wait for?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, I did have a question about liquor fees, too. Did we already pass that?
No, you can talk about liquor fees.
Okay, was there a change in the liquor fees? We kept them the same, yeah?
No, they kept them the same. It was, I talked to the chief on that, and he had recommended leaving them the same.
Okay, great. I know that we had talked about how we calculated those and had never, like, circled back around to that, so.
Yeah.
And then... I know, but that's okay. So, I noticed for the parks, we have, like, almost 80 different fees.
You're right.
Yeah, but only 22 of them have a resident versus non-resident charge. And so, I'm sort of curious what the rationale is for why we charge non-residents to Post Falls. An increased amount of money only for a quarter of things. Presumably, staff's time is used for most of them? So, I was just curious. I think I brought it up when we talked about parks' fees before and had expressed that I'd like to make sure that...
I know some of these, if they haven't contracted out with a third party, where if they have, I know, like, if you go through Judo or yoga, they have an outside vendor they provide, and so, it's a flat charge, or they do rock climbing. But if they have some in-house service, Dave could...
Sure, but it all gets processed through city staff that costs $30, right? So...
If you play a third party, they're paying some, they're just paying, it's a pass-through, but he could explain.
To add a little bit to that as well, fees have to be reasonably related to the cost of providing the service. And so, for non-resident fees, they should closely match that cost of providing service. Whereas, if we are giving a premium to residents, we're basically backfilling that with...
The money that the residents already paid to support the city staff that's making the program happen?
Yes. But that's the trade-off, I guess. So, you're not, you're likely not capturing the entire cost of providing the service. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
For residents, yeah.
So, then we also wouldn't be likely catching the cost of providing the service for non-residents if 3/4 of our...
Steve?
Yeah, thanks.
So, what you heard was correct. But we also throw another level, because I always like to be a little complicated. My staff loves it. On some of the classes, like, let's say, we get into the cross-country scheme or something.
Okay.
A lot of times, those are small-volume classes. And we find that by setting the, here's the cost to do it.
Okay.
So, it doesn't matter on that. But we wouldn't get enough residents to make it run. So, your non-residents, which are usually, you know, just in the county, maybe Corleyne, they actually offset some of that. So, it allows our residents to have activities that most likely would end up getting canceled.
Okay, so you...
Not always the case, but that's one of the things we look at. We look at what the market is. It's a lot of the classes that are businesses that we've hired out, are local businesses. So, they're looking at what they're charging, because we do introductions. We don't sit on the dance, we don't go at the highest level. We do introductions that eventually feed them into those. So, that's why I work with them.
Okay, that part makes sense. But I think your previous point is more helpful in that we have to have so much volume to provide it at all.
Correct.
So, if it's, if there's too expensive even for non-residents, then we wouldn't be able to provide the service at all to residents.
For the most part, yes.
Okay. Okay, great. That answers that about services that we provide. I do have a question about the parks themselves. We have resident and non-resident fees for using our parks, except for disc golf, our gym rental, and our community garden. Is there a reason that those three items don't have different prices? I thought the disc golf was particularly odd, since every other use of a park has a resident and a non-resident fee.
On the disc golf, that is when they're doing tournaments. So, what we find is, it's kind of like pickleball. Even though we're not charging that, you'll have, the organizer will find a resident to come forward.
Gotcha.
So, we just...
Okay.
It's how much time do you want to spend trying to track down, you know, what they're doing?
It's not like someone's renting out the disc golf course for their, like, 12-year-old birthday?
No.
Gotcha.
We're trying to capture what we consider a commercial use.
Okay.
Now, commercial use can be from a nonprofit or a group of people, and it's becoming a larger and larger issue. So, we're trying to capture some of that.
Okay.
You asked on...
Community gardens?
Oh, community garden. We've kept it at that price. We haven't found people coming from outside the area that much.
Gotcha.
But also, we're not filling up yet.
Okay. So, we don't need to price anyone?
We'd rather see more people using the plots than not.
Do you find, then, the same logic holds for the gym rental?
Okay, the gym rentals is a little bit different.
Okay, of course.
And we probably could have cut it out at this point, because with the last MOU we did with the school, they're going to take over doing the rentals again.
Okay.
We left it in there, because I have a feeling that towards the end of the year, they're going to say it's too much work and ask us to bring it back in. So, that's something the next day fair can bring back for you guys.
Okay, all right. I think that was all of them, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Jason, you have more? Shannon, anyone wish to speak? Wish to speak in opposition, Julie Hensley.
All right, Julie Hensley, 1360 East Warm Springs. I'm going to keep it short. The only one on there is for wastewater rates to be increased by 2.5%. Just a couple of years ago, it was $40 to flush our toilets in the city of Post Falls. And then, unfortunately, federal regulations made it to where we had to have new pump systems in order to put out into the river. But 7194 to flush a toilet seems quite steep. So, I don't know how we can mitigate this, but we've already increased our flushing. We doubled it in one year, and now it's increasing another 2-1/2%. Just might be something we want to look at, because I know other cities aren't paying as much around in our county. I've asked my other siblings who live in Hayden... Hayden and Dalton, and they're like, we don't, it's like $40 to flush toilet. What do you mean? You're paying almost $80 to flush a toilet. So that would just be the one I would consider, because it is a cost to every household for how much we're flushing our toilets for.
But just real quick, when they did master plan for that several years ago, we had a couple of years where it was 14% increases. 14%, 14%, 12%, 10%, we're down to 2.5. We've completed phase one of the upgrades to the plant, and we're hopefully gonna finish phase two and start phase three. Because of, you're right, it's because of regulation, and we've got to pay for it. So I understand, it's expensive, but we're still in the position at the city of Pulse Falls where we can fund those improvements, and I've said this previously, we've got, there are cities in the area that don't have the money necessary to keep their systems operating and meeting the requirements. So, yeah, it is expensive, but you should have been in my position 14 years ago when we were charging 14% increases. So, yeah, again, it's expensive, but it is, well, it laid out in master plan, and I know they look at it on a frequent basis. I'm not discounting what you said.
If I may add some, I think, important context. What drove the changes, some of it was driven by growth. The vast majority of the changes that are driven out there was due to the expiration of our permit with the EPA, the Idaho DEQ. And so they came back at us with a permit for being able to discharge into the river. That was the strictest permit ever proposed in the United States. The water that we drank, that we pull out of the aquifer, if you were to pull it out of the aquifer and dump it in the river, it's not in compliance with the permit. That's how out of control it is. So we had to add the entire tertiary treatment system, new UV treatment systems, everything else. All that is horribly expensive. And if we didn't do that, then we don't get our permit, and we can't discharge in the river, and I don't know if we just drown in sewage, or all of us go to jail, or what. But they start fining us every day for not meeting the permit, and then if we don't pay the fines, they start putting, well, I guess he gets to pick who goes to jail first.
It's mayor first.
So this has come up a lot over the last, because this has been, what, a 10-year, 15-year project. Please call the EPA, or call your federal legislatures and say, why does it cost me $80 to flush a toilet when the water I drink I can't even dump in the river? This is out of control.
They actually started, I think the city spent close to $500,000 in attorney fees and engineering fees, just try to get it to a level that was acceptable to the city.
Yeah, we had to sue the EPA.
They were, they actually were holding the upstream dischargers, Court Lane, Pulse Falls, to a stricter requirement than Spokane, Spokane Valley, and Liberty Lake. And the level to which they wanted us to adhere was not scientifically measurable. That's what we're dealing with.
Oh, I believe it.
And the interesting part about that, too, is the whole problem originally in Long Lake, was it still called Long Lake now, or is it Lake Spokane?
And Spokane, Spokane.
So, yeah, Spokane was allowed to pollute more than we were, even though they're downstream of us. And just a fun fact, the reason your dishwashing detergent doesn't work anymore is because of that lake, and lawsuits that came out to the EPA, and some algae that grew in there.
Phosphates.
So, so that all got, so the EPA said, no more phosphates in the water, and so people locally had to ban it. The manufacturers said, well, we're not gonna make two different formulas. And so now, so now washing detergent sucks. So that's how far back this goes.
But we understand it's expensive.
Yes, I know.
Thank you. Anyone else, Shannon?
None.
Do you care to rebut? Close the public hearing. Counsel?
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2026 fees as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. We do have one new business item, a Crown Reserve Phase One addendum, three.
I have a presentation I would like
This one should be pretty quick. Chris Schneider, City Engineer. This is an opportunity to save some money. That's what we've been talking about all night.
There we go.
So we are looking to get some 12-inch sleeves in the Spokane Street project up on Crown Reserve, north of the prairie on Spokane Street, about 452 feet of it. Basically, we're gonna have the contractor do it while they're out there doing work anyway, rather than us ripping out the road here in a year and have to maintain that now broken road. The total amount we're looking for is $23,226.25. It'll save us a good chunk of change in the future, rather than ripping out the road to just to get the pipe in now. That's all I got.
I love it. I move to approve it.
Oh, I have a question. No.
We still have discussion after the motion. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
A second.
Second question.
Now discussion.
Okay, I actually have a question about the addendum. This is a public park, right, that we're putting in?
Correct.
So that we can discharge water from our drinking water facility. Does the construction agreement include verbiage about the developer building this park for us, or is this park on our dime?
I do not know that.
Dave.
Parks, Dave.
Is it two different topics?
Well, we're talking about the contract.
I think it's relatively related.
Location is, this is Montrose?
Crown Point.
Crown Reserve.
Street, north of Crown Point.
We are, we actually are in negotiations right now
Oh.
With them. Okay, my legal counsel is here to represent me.
Hi, guys.
Name for the record.
Chris Gatbert, Deputy City Attorney. We have another addendum coming back with the developer for the construction improvement agreement related to that park. So they are developing it. They're going to be entitled to request some offsets from the development impact fees, but they are constructing and dedicating it to the city. That is not before you tonight, but it would be another addendum to this construction agreement.
I guess it just seemed to me that this would be a reasonable thing for them to do if they were also constructing the park.
Yeah, and we're in negotiations with the developer on that one.
Then why would we approve this if you're negotiating stuff that they're gonna build?
It's not interrelated in that sense that the park development and
I'm getting you legal counsel.
Sorry.
I'm gonna pay for that. We're in negotiations, but they may come back wanting a price, because we haven't determined price yet. That's higher than what we can afford. So they're not required to do it. They approached us about dedicating the land to the city and building a park in there. We've gone back and forth, but we don't have a firm price yet. So I hate to say that, yes, we could go back and negotiate, because we're gonna end up paying it.
Okay, but because they're building the road right now, we can't wait for the negotiations about that part.
I would say that that's fair to say, because we're still working on designs. They haven't given us a cost yet. It's just like we did with Foxtail. It took quite a long time before we all nailed down what the cost would be and what the city could afford and be willing to pay. And we're just starting that out with this group.
Okey-dokey.
Couple of quick, I'll make it very quick, things to keep in mind. When it comes to park improvements, they are entitled, if they do the improvements, they're entitled to a credit for every dollar that they spend from impact fees. The downside to having them build things occasionally is the standard that your typical developer wants to build to is a standard of essentially something that the HOA might own, or that their business in front of their business is going to be. It's not something, they're not looking to build it for quality that's gonna last and minimize maintenance over time. They're looking to get it built and move on. We've run into a number of problems over the years where developers have built public infrastructure for parks in particular, where it's frankly, it just isn't up to the standard that we would want, and we end up rehabbing it sooner than we otherwise would. And so we're pretty careful about what things we're willing to do agreements with developers in parks. It's just bit us too many times, but we do it occasionally, things like a parking lot, where they're paving the road next door. That makes a ton of sense for us to have them put that, put the parking lot in, because that's not really special. Putting the irrigation, the controllers, the landscaping, sometimes it gets a little haywire, and we end up coming in and having to fix what they've done if we, if we contract with them for certain things. So that's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Is this coming out of impact fees?
It'll, the funding source is the Water Reclamation Fund.
Okay.
For this piece, the park.
Yeah, for, yeah, 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 yeah.
Excellent question, because I thought these were two totally separate issues. I didn't realize how interrelated they were. So thank you for that.
Okay, now
Anything else? Entend the motion?
We already got a motion, right?
Motion second already.
That's right, because then
Call the roll.
It's been a long night. Let's go into execu, no, roll call, please.
Westlin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am. Name for the record, please, and you've got, you'll have a timer. Come on up.
My name is Angela Thompson. I live at 1503 East Third Avenue. I've requested to see the mayor twice, and I have not been allowed to do that.
Attending to?
I have a fentanyl and meth person living next door to me. For four years, I have had my property damaged through multiple windows. My windows have been broken, my garage has been broken. I have called the police for four years, and they just gave me a disturbing the peace ticket last June, while a protective order was in place against these criminals. That is a civil rights violation of my personhood and my property. I have a right to protect my property at 11:30 at night, when people are selling drugs in my front yard. And I'm not, I'm not happy with what's going on with the police station towards me as a person.
Okay. Ready to finish? You done?
I want to thank the city for installing a light on bay, a telephone pole there. That stopped a little bit. But there's children that are selling drugs on that spot, and it's not being dealt with. And that makes me feel that there is some support for that criminal behavior, because it's not being dealt with. I've had to ingest smells from these persons. My house is trespassed on a schedule. I went to go and talk to the DEA in Court Lane because of non-assistance to me. I'm very upset. I'm a homeowner. I have a year and a half to pay off my home, and I'm thinking, what did I pay for? It shouldn't be like this in Pulse Falls. It's not right.
Okay.
It's a violation of my civil rights to enjoy life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness in my country, and that's not being afforded me. And I wanted to look you in the eye and say that to you today.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Captain, can you get with me? First of all, I don't recall having a request come across to me, so if it did, and we did not, if I did not get back to you, I apologize. I've not seen it. But could you schedule a time we get together, so you can give me an update on the situation, please? Thank you. Anyone else? Administrator staff reports. Please tell me. We have none.
We have none, but we want an executive session.
But what? We already voted that out. The mayor and council club here tonight. Mayor and council comments, I already addressed the school, back to school, please be safe. Council comments.
Nobody wants to hear from me.
We do not need an executive session, so the next motion is
Go home.
All those in favor
Aye.
Being adjourned.